I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Okay. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Oenby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
The next item is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval. The agenda is presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion's been moved in second. And, Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to item 4.01, announcements in superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today was the first day of the 2017-18 school year. We were very excited to welcome back our students. Ms. Cook and I visited War Hill, Lafayette, Hornsby, and Blaton Elementary on the Department of Operations, and they were all off to a great start this morning. I plan to visit all of our other schools before the end of this week. Thank you, teachers, administrators, and staff for your preparation that made this a great start to the year. At this point, we'd like to share a short slideshow of the day. Got one or two other announcements this evening as well. Berkeley Middle School was selected as this year's recipient of the Lowes Heroes Project Grant. Awarded annually, this grant offers Lowes employees an opportunity to team with an organization to make a difference in the community. According to Lowes pro-service specialist Jenny Bradford, the goal of the program is simply to make our community a better place to live. Lowes donated up materials and local Williamsburg store employees volunteered their time and talents to build an outdoor classroom for Berkeley students. Included in the project was beautification of the school's exterior and building a structure for teachers to hold class in an outdoor space. The crew painted existing planters and benches, replaced the plants with evergreens to beautify the grounds. Vinyl privacy fencing was installed to secure a classroom space free of distractions, and in addition, the crew built picnic tables for seating and three large planters for sustainable plants. Special thanks to Lowes and all of the volunteers for their hard work and commitment to getting the job done on a shortened schedule due to the weather. WJCC has honored that Berkeley Middle was selected as the Lowes Heroes Grant recipient. To look at the photographs of the outdoor classroom, please visit our website, wjccschools.org. And finally, this evening, we wish to congratulate Mr. Kelly for being elected as vice chairman of the New Horizons Regional Education Board. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. Those are all of my announcements this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any announcements from any school board members? Okay, great. That moves us to item 5.01, citizen comments. I think we have three speaker cards, so Ms. Hummel, will you provide instructions, please?
All right. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
And I will keep the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Margie Friedrichs?
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As you said, my name is Margie Friedrichs, and I am the mother of three WJCC students who have had to attend three different WJCC elementary schools and two different middle schools, all while living at the same address. So I have significant firsthand experience with WJCC school redistricting. I'm also a professor at William &amp; Mary. I work with mathematical optimization models, and as a result, I'm very familiar with just how critical the criteria are that are fed into the redistricting optimization routines. So I was surprised to see that what I consider to be the single most important redistricting criterion was missing from the school board's redistricting fact sheet. This most important criterion is also very simple. Redistrict as few high school students as possible. Uprooting students from one high school and placing them in another is a traumatic experience and should only be undertaken if absolutely necessary. High school students struggle to find their place in a school. They join sports teams and school clubs. They forge relationships with guidance counselors and with teachers who they'll soon be asking for college recommendations from. Uprooting students interferes with student achievement, inhibits partnerships with families, and doesn't make for a welcoming learning climate. So my first message to the school board today is to please consider, again, moving as few high school students as possible. I believe this should be the most critical criteria used in the redistricting decisions and should far outweigh a criteria based on feeder schools, which would disrupt the high school careers of hundreds and hundreds of high school students in the city and county. The capacity numbers indicate that moving only about thirty-five to forty students per grade level from Jamestown to Lafayette and not adjusting War Hill at all could completely satisfy the socioeconomic capacity issues through 2020, socioeconomic and capacity issues. My second suggestion is to provide rising ninth to twelfth grade students the option to stay at their high school and graduate from the school where they first entered, with a caveat that they would need to waive their right to bus transportation. We may be forced to move rising ninth graders, but moving into a new high school as a ninth grader with a cohort of other eighth grade graduates is much less traumatic than switching high schools. My daughter started ninth grade today. To be completely honest, this morning she would have been fine going to any of the three high schools, since she knows friends going to all three. However, after she's been at the school for a full year, joined a sports team, joined the school band, has been involved in other clubs, and forged relationships with teachers and counselors, she would be devastated to be forced by the school board to switch schools again. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I hope you'll consider these two suggestions. One, minimize the number of uprooted high school students, and two, provide all current high school students an option to graduate from where they started.
Deborah Beebaut?
Respected members of the school board, my name is Deborah Beebaut. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have lived in Jame City County for twenty-four years and work as a professor at the College of William &amp; Mary. My husband also holds a PhD in chemistry and teaches in the York County School System. As career educators, my husband and I have strongly been involved in the education of our three children, one grad and two attendees of Jamestown High School. We currently reside in Powhatan Secondary, a community which has endured considerable disruption in both recent redistrictings. I respectfully ask the school board to minimize further disruption of our community in 2018. I would like to thank the members of the school board for recognizing that the process used for redistricting in 2010 was flawed. That process split the community of Powhatan Secondary between Matoka and DJ Montague Elementary Schools through individual board member manipulation of the consultant-generated maps. Tumult and heartache accurately describe what befell the community of Powhatan Secondary in 2010. My neighbors on the opposite side of Newsroad continue to feel betrayed. Sadly, the school board recently voted to preserve the Powhatan Secondary community, divide between Matoka and DJ Montague despite large differences in their current capacity levels. I understand the community of Powhatan Secondary is located in the central part of the county. Our location resulted in displacement from Mathewelle to Matoka at the elementary level in 2007. As a result of these two closely timed redistrictings, my oldest son was forced to attend four different schools in five years, although my family has resided in the same house for over a decade. In short, the Powhatan Secondary community feels targeted during the last two redistricting processes. We have been shifted to a new school at the elementary level, then shifted to a new school at the middle school level, and split at the elementary level. While it has been an honor for Powhatan Secondary to work with the dedicated teachers and staff to make these schools' strong components of the WJCC school system enough already, forcing Powhatan Secondary children and families to once again bear a large portion of the brunt of redistricting is neither fair nor reasonable. Please give the Powhatan Secondary community relief in the 2018 redistricting. Either leave our children at their current schools or move them to schools that are closer to our community and reinvest the associated savings in programming and staffing throughout the school district. Thank you for your consideration.
Helen Murphy?
Hi. Excuse me, I'm getting the plague from my students already. I'm Helen Murphy. I'm also a professor at William &amp; Mary. Apparently, we're all out tonight, and I have one child in the school system right now and one that will be starting. And I'm part of the group that was here previously. We don't need to reiterate all of our thoughts about diversity. We do think diversity is important when considering redistricting. I just came with some recent information about redistricting and criteria from other locations in Virginia that happened this past year, and I just wanted to share that with the board. This is actually the redistricting criteria for Alexandria City. This is a printout of an article from the Washington Post in December about students that were upset about redistricting because it didn't include diversity and it led to segregation. And then finally, in Henrico County, they consider diversity as one of their goals in redistricting, and I just wanted to share that with the board as you make your own decision. I also want to say that I agree with the idea that students should be grandfathered in, and so students in high school should be given the option to stay there while we think about our redistricting. So if I could give this to someone?
Please hand it to the clerk. Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those are all the cards.
Thank you. There are no more speaker cards. So that brings us to proposed agenda items. The first is 6.01, preliminary June 2017 financials and 2017 year-end spending plan. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Burt is going to present the end-of-year financial report on the year-end spending plan for your consideration this evening. Thank you, Ms. Burt.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, there are three documents in front of you tonight that I will be referencing, one being the financial highlights, the second being the school bus replacement cost and cycle, and then a fact sheet that we've developed for our year-end spending plan items. It's important to note that each year we bring this to you in the month of September. However, we have not gone through our external audit at this point, so these are preliminary and they are unaudited. So as we go through the audit process over the next several weeks, these numbers could change very slightly. My team works really hard to make sure that we have a grasp on what's presented to you, but we need to get this ball rolling so we can pass it on to our funding partners for approval. With that being said, by state code, we are not allowed to carry over funds from year to year. It's vital that we do not operate in a deficit. We have to be financially conservative, and thus that results in a surplus at the end of the year. The contract with WJCC and the county and city require that we present a year-end spending plan to both bodies, and that those unallocated funds must be returned to the county and city, and then they either approve or not approve our plan as we present it to you. This year, I'm happy to report that we ended fiscal year seventeen with a surplus of 1.2 million, or roughly 0.98% of our operating budget. This surplus is a result of mostly fuel and utility costs, as well as attrition. We conduct a three-year analysis of our budget cycle to evaluate trends when it comes to utilities and fuel. It's important to note with the volatility of the oil market, and this is very fresh on everyone's minds at the moment, that we provide that three-year trend to leave ourselves some cushion. While prices have been favorable recently, that does not mean they will be sustainable that way, and we have to budget appropriately. So while $513,000 in savings looks like a significant amount, that truly is not a significant amount when you're talking about a budget of our size. Attrition, we have done a very good job over the last several years of incorporating that into our budget process as we begin. We did end this fiscal year with $576,000 in attrition savings. That is part of the year-end spending plan that we are presenting to you tonight. The estimated attrition savings that we built into our current budget is 1.3 million. I will call your attention to the financial highlights. If you can flip to page three of that, that is the page that is different from your normal financial reports that we present monthly, and we'll walk through this. So in the operating budget, we had a budget of $128,593,768. As of today, we have expenditures and encumbrances of $127,335,722, or a difference of $1,258,046. From those funds, we return to the county $600,000 to go to future capital needs. That leaves us with an available spending balance of $658,046. From this, we make the following recommendations to you for approval and your consideration. The first is impact insight. In the superintendent's transition plan, there is an identified need for a comprehensive analysis of instructional initiatives that support student achievement. Impact Insight is a service that provides information on the extent to which current instructional initiatives are being implemented with fidelity and the impact that these initiatives have on student achievement and other district objectives. The cost is estimated $45,000 for that service. The second item presented to you for consideration is the replacement of some textbooks. During the 17-18 budget development process, we did eliminate some textbooks from the budget in order to balance our operating budget. The year-end spending funding request is including anatomy and physiology and AP physics textbooks. These textbooks were last purchased in 2003, and both courses have gone through SOL and Advanced Placement Curriculum revisions since the adoption. Additional biology textbooks are also included to support the pathways program at War Hill. To purchase these textbooks, the cost is $71,116. The next request is an analysis of our support and administrative pay scales. We are requesting this because over the past several years, we have focused on the elimination of compression in the teacher salary scale, and we need an analysis of our support and administrative pay scales to provide a comparative data to ensure that we are being competitive in the market for positions such as principals, assistant principals, administrative support staff, custodial, cafeteria, and transportation staff. The cost of this is approximately $65,000. The next request is for the replacement of cafeteria tables at Clara Bird Baker. It has been brought to the attention of operations and administration staff that these are currently a safety issue. Additionally, the tables are causing damage to the new tile floor that was installed in fiscal year sixteen. The cost to replace those tables is $28,000. And finally, as we always talk about school bus replacements, there is a school bus replacement cycle that's in front of you. In 2014, we did begin a smooth replacement cycle to replace nine buses. That has modified to ten buses in the recent year. You will remember in fiscal year eighteen that we did not request any additional buses in the operating budget. However, in fiscal year nineteen, there are twelve buses that come due for replacement based on age. With that being said, we are asking for funding to support the purchase of four replacement buses for an estimated cost of $436,000 to set us on some good footing as we begin the fiscal year nineteen operating budget. After all of those spending request items are presented to you, what that would do is return $12,930 to our funding partners if they were to approve our plan as presented and approved by you. And that was a lot of information, and I will be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Oenby?
Questions?
Sure.
So just curious, with the buses that we replaced, do we keep the other buses? Do we use those for parts? Where do the buses go?
We do. We use some for spares because we have to do inspections every forty-five days. We do park them out if they are no longer usable, or we sell them.
So are we, is there any way to project that we might sell, so that we might recoup some money? Are we planning on selling any if we, like, do we know that now?
If they are sellable, we do. We recently sold, I believe, eight buses recently from our last transition, and we've gotten some money to recoup from that to go back into the pot. Yes, we do. If they're sellable, we do try to sell them on public surplus.
Then just a couple other questions. So like, the cost of the impact insight, is that a one-time? Is that, it was described as a service. Is that something we would do annually? Is it a one-time?
That's actually a one-time service. It includes professional development of staff as well, and really the purpose is to look at all of our instructional programs and really assess which of those are having the most impact on student achievement. And if we are implementing something that works, to what level are we implementing it by school? And really, it's a way to look at our minimum amount of resources and use them in the best possible way. That's the purpose of the service, and it is a one-time.
One last question. So I understand that we do, we should definitely do some analysis of our compensation for support and other staff. Is this something that we would send out as an RFP? Is this like a bottom, do we know this is a cost? It might be a little different. Is that like the standard cost to do something like that?
We estimated that based on conversations that happened between human resources and three other divisions that recently went through this. It certainly would go out for an RFP because it's a service. We're required to do that. We just wanted to estimate what we think the highest possible cost would be. It could very well come in lower.
Lower. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burt.
Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The analysis of support and administrative pay scales, I think, I mean, with the issues we're having with bus drivers, I think that's really kind of poignant there, and then we need to do that. But I'm also concerned about our teacher salaries, too, and that we might be falling behind comparatively. Is there a way that we can expand that to include our, include teacher salaries and comparisons with other divisions and nationally, statewide, that kind of thing?
As long as we have the funding available to support that, we most certainly could. Yes.
I think we need to look at, I think we need to really take a hard look at that as well. And if that means that we have to not buy a bus, we might want to think about doing that. So just my thoughts there. So, and I'd like, I'd like a little more understanding of the impact insight and what we're really specifically looking to do that. So, that'd be fun. Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, didn't, I thought we did a study last year, the year before, when we came up with the new salary scale. We looked at compensation and salaries in all our surrounding school districts. Did we not do that?
Internally, internally, our HR team did some analysis of comparisons to other divisions. Yes.
So we have done, we've done that kind of analysis.
A third-party service hasn't been done since 2009/10.
And part of that was to look at the question of compression?
Yes.
And did we make some adjustments as a result? So we have done that. That's what I thought. I was a little confused that, you know, I thought we had done that. Okay. That's it. That was all.
So based on the impact insight and the other compensa-
Yeah, basically, if the board approves this recommendation, then it will go to the city and county, and based on their approval of funding, then we will immediately set out with an RFP for the HR study, compensation study, and also the impact insight. So we're waiting, the timeline is, we can't move until we have funds. Then we'll move very quickly because we really want some of that data before we launch into the budget process for next year, because both of those will give us good information and data to go into the budget process.
Just, this is just a question about the budget itself. So when you sell, if you can sell the older buses, where does that money, what bucket does that fall into, or...
It comes into our revenue under sale of equipment, so it offsets your whole balance of revenue and expenditures.
It's already in the budget.
We don't build the full amount in because you don't know how many buses or vehicles or any equipment, for that matter, what you're going to sell. So we don't fully budget what we actually receive. Some years, some years, we don't achieve our budget. I believe we budget $5,000 every year in sale of equipment.
I have, I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Kelly said about the study. I hear what Dr. Beers said about having done it internally, but externally, I'm just curious if staff thinks there's an opportunity to learn a little bit more about teacher salary schedules, or do we feel like, do you all feel like you have that pretty well in hand, or is that something that would benefit the division to really do a deeper look at that and make sure that we are, you know?
I think the information is publicly available, and we do have access to a database that allows us to compare teacher salaries across regional organizations and our peers. Other support staff, we don't have like comparisons, so it's more difficult to do, and therefore a fuller compensation study creates data that we don't already have. We're already aware that our beginning salaries are not competitive with other surrounding systems. So yes, an external view is always a good thing, but there is a certain amount of that we can do ourselves.
So we already have our eye on the prize and where we need to go with teacher salaries and we need to...
We do need to make some adjustments for our teachers, absolutely.
Okay. I think I'm fully supportive of that compensation salary analysis. I think, as Mr. Kelly said, the bus driver situation makes it abundantly clear, but I think that we have a lot of people out there who we, you know, maybe aren't paying as much as other divisions are. So, I think that would be good to note, to see where, where we need to make adjustments, if any. And then the Impact Insight, I really appreciate, because I think this board has been really keenly interested in evaluating our programs and our efficacy across programs, and so I think this is a very important first step. So, I hope that, I hope that the localities agree to, you know, to this request. So, just in terms of process, next meeting, this board would take action on this, and then from there, the localities, both Williamsburg and James City, would consider that, and you'll keep us abreast of.
The county meeting, I believe, is the 10th, and the city meeting is the 12th. I hope I don't have that backwards. One is the 10th, one is the 12th.
Okay, you knew I was going to ask that.
I did.
And so, if you, yeah, if we could be made aware of that, and then they'll take action, and then we come back and then handle this on a contract basis as per our policy. Is that right?
And that's October, not September.
Right, okay. Okay, all right. Any other questions before? Thank you, Ms. Bird.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, that moves us to item 6.02, award a contract for request for proposal number 18-11742, engineering services for the Laurel Lane Elementary School HVAC replacement.
Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is here to present two proposals to do with the replacement of HVAC systems tonight. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, school board chair and members. Let me say happy first day. And before I begin, I wanted to tell you that we've had a really good first day. It's been hectic, but all the kids are home. Everyone's there safe, so I wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
So, tonight, and before you provide information in regards to the request for proposal for engineering services for the Laurel Lane Elementary School HVAC. This project was part of the fiscal year CIP, 18 CIP. The budget for this project was $209,582. The current HVAC system at Laurel Lane was installed in 1988 and has reached the end of its useful life. The target date to complete the HVAC replacement is in two phases, over the summer of 2018 and over the summer of 2019. The project will include removal and replacement of air handlers and coolers, heat pumps, and at the same time, the firm shall propose HVAC system options for the replacement of the existing system, which will include eliminating some, some environmental concerns that we have and for air handling units in the 100 and 300 area. When I say environmental, it's not harm to kids, it's just ozone and things like that. The request for proposal was sent out on June 27, and was returned on July 28. The process of the RFP has been completed, but of notice of intent, has not gone out to the, to the, to the award winner yet. And at the next meeting, a detailed vendor information will be provided at the September 19 meeting.
Any questions? Mr. Kelly?
So, Marcel, we assumed everybody was, everybody was home because you're here.
Yes, I got here at 6:20.
So, as far as the scope for this, is this scope for design and equipment, or is this scope for design first, and then we do?
It's design first, construction drawings, and those kind of items, and then we'll install and repair the, when we put the bid out for the, for the installation, that will-
Okay, so this is, this is a design award?
Just design of the system.
Right, and so the design, the, the budget for the design was the $200,000?
Budget for the design is $200,000. And if I recall in the CIP, and Ms. Bird may be able to help me, I think the first year, I think overall, the budget for this project was close to four, four million, four point, four point, four point two million.
Got you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Want to start talking to us about the 6.03 engineering services for Jamestown High School HVAC replacement?
Again, this is a, a request for proposal for the engineering services for Jamestown HVACs. This HVAC system was approved in the CIP, fiscal year 18 CIP, for the amount of design was approved for $320,000. That current HVAC was installed in 1997, and it also has reached the end of its useful life. The installation will also occur in two phases, over 2000, summer 2018 and 2019. The award shall propose the HVAC system options for the replacement of the existing system. And again, this is a proposal that was, that went out on June 27, and was returned on July 27. Process has been completed, but the notice of intent has not been awarded as of yet.
Zombie?
Mr. Snipes, I'm just curious, why, why was it that we got 10 extra years out of Jamestown versus Laurel Lane?
Laurel Lane is, has pods, so we do, this will be over a certain area at Laurel Lane, not over the entire school. At Jamestown, Jamestown was built in 1997, so it's about 20 years. But Laurel Lane has had pods, HVACs at different pods. This is not the entire, all the pods, this is over one section of the city.
Yeah? I mean, I guess my question, I don't understand that we, isn't there an HVAC system currently there?
Yes.
Okay, so you can't use, I must be not understanding why there needs to be money expended for a design of a new HVAC system, since there's already, you can't use the current design?
No, because the current design is a little, is much older than what they would recommend now. To get a more energy-efficient system, you want the most up-to-date. So, if you consider that a system was built in 97 and was designed in 97, you want something that is much newer and much more energy-efficient. In addition, they may not even be able to design it for that, for that system that was previously there. So, all systems, it may change over time. So, over 20 years, you can have systems that change dramatically.
I do understand that. Okay, gee, it's just such a lot of money. We could buy a lot of buses for you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much, Mr. Snipes.
Sticking around for a little bit.
Oh, are you? Okay, so item 6.04, request for permanent easements and conveyance of real property to the city of Williamsburg. Dr. Heron?
Madam Chair, I'm going to hand straight to Mr. Snipes again. Thank you, sir.
Again, yes, thank you. I am here tonight, as well as the city engineer, Aaron Small, to answer questions, but I'll start out with just the proposal for the public and the, and the people sitting here. The permanent easement is for utilities, for, and have access to utilities. The conveyance of real property is for real property of about .557 acres, which is not a lot. It's about 24,000 square feet. As a condition of the city's site plan approval for the, for the new fourth, for the fourth middle school, it's necessary for them to take a little bit of the corner there to align some, to align it. So, if we get any more technical, the engineer is going to have to get involved. So, if you have any other questions. But this is at no cost to the school board at all. And the conveyance and the easement grants the city of Williamsburg, like I said, permanent access to the school board property at the intersection of Ironbound and Long Hill. One last thing. The last time we did this was about a year ago, it was about September of last year that we also conveyed the easement to them.
This isn't a surprise test. We knew this was coming. It's been part of the plan for a long time. Now, we're just pulling the trigger and making sure that it's, you know, dotting the Ts and crossing the S's.
That is correct.
Crossing the, dotting, yeah.
Dotting our Rs and crossing the Ts.
Sorry, you got my point. I did want to bring up a minor technicality. As you know, we are one operating board, but we are two independent school boards. And so, because this is an issue of property, the documentation on the deed, is it the deed? Deed?
Fee simple.
The fee simple is marked that way. So, just wanted to kind of point that out. It's just a minor technicality that, that actually, Mrs. Taylor and I, if the board approves this, would sign it as representatives of two separate school boards.
So, not that this is an issue, but do the two city people have to vote together? If one votes one way, one votes the other way, is that a problem? Just a completely academic question.
I will try to answer the question. I believe it actually, because you are one operating board, the operating board votes how it's approved, and then the individual school board members that are authorized to sign the deed are the ones that sign.
Okay.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
If we decide to be difficult.
They could dissent, and it wouldn't matter.
It's not out of the question. Okay, just curious.
Yeah. Anything else on this? Thank you both for being here. Thank you. Okay, so then item 6.05, readoption of standard operating procedures.
Policy committee?
Yes, so if you turn your attention to page 34 of the document, that's where the majority of the changes were made. It has to do with electronic communication disclaimer that we have.
Sorry about that.
Something that was caught a little later than we wanted, but that is the major change.
Any questions? So, this will go on, like everything else we've just discussed, as proposed agenda items, this will go on next, next meeting's agenda for action, and then we will see it again in January. Okay, great. Any other questions about this, OP? All right. That brings us to item 7.01, redistricting criteria. Before I hand it over to Dr. Heron, I just want to go over a few things. Excuse me. The first is, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our hiring a consultant. And I think, I think I can say this on behalf of the board, that it's really a good use of public funds to hire a consultant for big projects that we don't often undertake. If we do often undertake something, it makes sense to build internal capacity, but for those occasional projects, hiring a consultant without outside expertise is really critical because we really want to do things well and with the best, with best practice in mind. I also want to remind the public that, in this case, the superintendent's job per our policy is to recommend to us, in this case, ultimately criteria, and then ultimately maps that we then take action on, we approve or don't approve those recommendations. So, in this meeting, I hope to give, that all of us can give the superintendent and the consultants as much clarity as possible so that they can aggregate our collective priorities, so that they can come up with criteria that we can support, and then do their job, so that the results actually reflect what, what we want. And some of those, some of those items are going to conflict with each other, and I think we'll learn a little bit about that tonight. But first, we're going to hear from Dr. Heron for an introduction, and then we'll hear from the consultant, and they'll go through a slide deck, like them to go through the slide deck in its entirety, and then we can circle back and talk about the, the different decision points that are in the slide deck and have that discussion, and hopefully come to a point where we can give really specific direction, if that's, if everybody's in agreement to that. All right, Dr. Heron?
Madam Chair, with the opening of the fourth middle school, we, we must adjust attendance boundaries to accommodate that fourth middle school. In addition to middle school boundaries, the board did open the door to consider changing high school boundaries as well, so that, that's under consideration tonight as well. And to ensure the implementation is successful, we need to establish very clear and definite criteria. Final maps will be approved by February 2018. That's just a little bit of background. I'd like to introduce to you this evening, two guests. First of all, Ms. Karen Daniel Hamburg, who's here in support this evening in the audience, and Mr. Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies, who's here to present the information this evening. Thank you, sir.
Great, it's great to be here. Believe it or not, I've been doing this for 12 years now, and when our company did the 2005 process, that was, that was something that I watched from afar. And so, I was working on another process when that went on. And so, since then, I've probably done over 20 of these processes, and I can promise you, none of them was perfect. We didn't have a single process where everybody was happy, because that's kind of the nature of the redistricting process. I want to just kind of start with the overall process of this. We had a plan for planning meeting where we laid out the timeline for the process. Tonight, we're here to talk about developing some measurable criteria. We're going to talk a little bit about the data that we're going to do in the analysis that we'll use to develop some options and what that, what that option analysis looks like. And then everything that we're going to do is going to be completely transparent. And as Dr. Heron alluded to, this will be a process that we're building steam as we go, collecting input, feedback, and then we'll bring a recommendation through Dr. Heron to the board. Just, just to make sure that we're, we're on board with expectations, we know boundary planning in general is a difficult process for all communities. There's not going to be a perfect plan. There's not going to be a machine that we build where we put all the data into, all the criteria, and then the right answer comes out. At the end, we're going to have to have a human decision that's going to be made, and not everybody's going to be happy. One goal in this process is to get community members to this point, where I may not be happy or agree with the outcome, but I understand how we got here. That understanding is key to building community trust throughout these processes. Here's the overall project timeline. We've got, we had our plan for planning, and I believe it was in July, and then here we are today. We have our, our redistricting process, or our, our policy, not policy, but a criteria meeting. We'll have a public hearing on the 19th, and then we hope to finalize, you know, some, get some consensus on the 3rd of October, and then we'll have board action on this criteria on the 17th. And so, we're at the beginning of this process. We want to make sure that this is a very measured, measured steps that we go through to develop these criteria and these guidelines that we'll be using. And then, once we have those guidelines, it's really going to help us establish that framework to develop options within. We don't want to come up with a series of options that may or may not be acceptable. We'll have some internal work sessions and some focus groups, and then we'll have a series of community meetings at the end of November, beginning of December, and then we'll finalize a recommendation to bring to the board in January. So, again, what is the purpose of creating these criteria? We really want to establish guiding principles for the development of options. Without guiding principles, there's no way to limit the number of options or the viability of options that we bring to you. These criteria and guidelines will give us clear direction to help develop options that, again, will be acceptable to the board. Just a little background on the analysis, this is just some of the data that we look at. We look at the capacity, we look at the program placement within the facility. Do we have any facilities? We need to consider special education, magnet programs, those kinds of things. We also look at demographics. We want to look at socioeconomic indicators, any other relevant data that you, that you see fit that we should look at. As we develop options, again, we're going to develop them internally, and then we'll take them to the community to kind of get some feedback. We're not asking the community to vote on what's going to happen, we're purely taking the temperature. One thing that I want to emphasize is that I don't like to go to the community with three different variations of the same thing or four different variations of the same thing. I want to make sure we kind of hit all those different criteria that we talk about. We don't, we don't want to have the same area impacted in every single option, if we can avoid it. We'll use that feedback to develop strengths and challenges for each option and evaluate how well they compare to the guidelines that we establish. This is just kind of a nuts and bolts example of kind of what we'll be looking at. Internally, we'll, we'll kind of chop the division up into little pieces where we can very quickly identify number of students impacted and what other measurable indicators we're looking at, whether or not an area has been moved into previous redistricting, what the socioeconomic balance may be. And we like to do this in a work session setting so that we can, we can very quickly see, all right, well, this, this little tweak works, this doesn't work, this may impact a future pattern. And, you know, we like to make it simple so that we can just use a drop-down menu to assign a specific area to a new school, and then it'll run all our numbers for us. So, as far as the community meetings go, again, this is that transparency piece. We want to, we want to present the options to the community at large for feedback. We'll also prevent the, present the process like we're doing now. Community members will have the opportunity to complete an individual questionnaire and share opinions about the options. All feedback will be compiled, compiled into results report, and we'll also make all materials available online for, you know, online consumption. Typically, what I like to do is I do a, a pre-recorded presentation so that there's no noise in the background or anything, and everybody at home can kind of get the same show that everybody got if they want to come to the meetings. And typically, we leave that online for two weeks after the meeting to collect additional feedback. Everything that we do throughout this process is on a redistricting page on the district website. We'll have all the board meeting agendas and presentations, all background reports, all the community meeting documents, and the summary of results, the project timeline. And once we get to the point where we have options, we'll have an online application where you can plug in an address and the term. we'll have an online application where you can plug in an address and determine, you know, am I impacted by this scenario, that kind of thing. As we compile the results, we're looking at kind of, you know, what is your overall level of support for each option? Are there components of this option that you like? Are there components that you don't like? What is your preferred option? And what's really important to me is that, that qualitative comment. You know, we can, we can have people come in and they can fill out, you know, a hundred surveys if they want and they can say they don't like it, but what I really like to get to is that, that comment because we can kind of go through that and see if we have somebody who's just sitting there copying and pasting the same comment in every single survey or we can really get down into those meaningful comments to see, did we miss something? So as we build towards school board discussion and action, I can't, I can't tell you the last time we've had a process where the recommendation was one of the options that was presented. Every time we do it, it's some kind of tweak based on that public feedback. So that's, that's important. This is not just a process where we're taking options through to get a rubber stamp. We're really listening to the community when they're giving us that feedback. And so that's important to consider that, you know, we are, we are incorporating that public participation component. So that's what I've got as far as process. I know we talked about wanting to go through the entire presentation. Do you want me to go through each of the criteria? Or do you want to just go through them one at a time?
Yeah, if you could go through the, and just kind of get everyone food for thought and then we can circle back, I think, and talk about kind of groupings of, kind of discussion topics, if you will.
Excellent. So again, this is a duplicate slide. The purpose for having this criteria is so that we have bounds. We want to make sure that we're going to develop some options that will work for you as a board. Just some considerations. The guidelines may or may not be prioritized. I've worked with districts that do prioritize them and I've worked with districts that don't. It just depends on what you want to do. Just as an example, I've got one district that they, their guideline is the socioeconomic balance, thou shalt be within three percent of the district-wide average. That's, that's the criteria. And when you have that rigid of a criteria, it really does start to limit what you can do as far as options development. So that's just something you may want to consider. Some may be in direct contradiction of others. You know, say we want to have that, that good socioeconomic balance, but it impacts twenty percent of the students. How important is it when we weigh that, that socioeconomic balance, that diversity versus how many students we're going to impact? The other piece that I think is big is, you know, we, in every process, we hear minimal impact, minimal impact, minimal impact. What's important to consider is longevity. If we do minimal impact now, how long is it going to last? Are we going to be back here again considering impacting the same kids in two or three years? And so that's another piece that we want to make sure that we, that we capture and that we consider. Again, I can't harp on this enough. This is going to be a little repetitive. The criteria are not going to be all things to all people. No matter what happens, when we have criteria, somebody in the community is going to pick up one piece of the guideline. So you didn't adhere to this, so you violated your entire process. And it's important to realize that, hey, these are guidelines. We're not making laws. We're not building a rocket ship here. We're trying to generate an envelope for us to operate within. I'm going to kind of just go through some, some frequently used criteria that a lot of other divisions and districts use around the country. Feeder pattern continuity is a big one. And what this is, is this, this kind of illustrates over here what a perfect feeder pattern is. And what a feeder pattern is, is the series of schools that children in a single address will attend K-12. And so this is an example. We've got elementary schools in green, a middle school in orange, and a high school in purple. And so I've got four individual elementary schools here that all feed into the same middle school and that that one middle school feeds into that one high school. And that is as simple as a feeder pattern as we can get. There's no splits where we have one little neighborhood splitting off to one middle school and then coming back. That's what this example is over here where we have what looks, you know, it looks like seven different elementary schools feeding into four different pieces of middle schools and then into one high school. And that's what we call a feeder split. And it, it happens and it's ugly. And I've worked in, in districts where we've, we've gone through a process where we've got seventy-five schools and we, we have a total of a hundred and fifty splits. No, you're not ugly. And, and we went through a process with the community where we wanted to make sure that we, we're going to start over. And we impacted probably twenty percent of the district, but we got them down to, I think, four splits from middle school, from elementary to middle school and then six from middle school to high school. And so it is possible. And teachers will tell you that, hey, when we have those kids in that one cohort, we can really do some things great vertically because we know that we're, we're going to have them in the next grade level, in the next school, and those teachers can collaborate. And there's great things that can happen from that. Proximity. This is, this is a couple different, a couple different points in here. Attempt to assign entire neighborhoods to the same school. Consider students' proximity to campus and promote safe and reasonable walking zones to encourage healthier students. Utilize transportation resources effectively. What I put in here is just an example of a closest school analysis. And so what I did is I plugged in the school locations and the road network into the computer system and I basically said, make the most efficient boundaries from a transportation standpoint as you possibly can. If everybody just goes to their geographically closest school, what does it look like? And what this shows us over here is this shows us our utilization at each facility. And so we have some facilities that have a hundred and sixty-five percent utilization and some facilities that have twenty-one percent utilization. That happens when you have schools that are in very close proximity to each other. This just happens to be the same district that had that thou shalt be within three percent of the free and reduced socioeconomic indicator. And you can see what it does there as far as skewing that socioeconomic balance, that diversity. And so that's that, that's kind of that cause and effect of that proximity discussion. Repeat boundary changes. Minimize the number of repeated attendance area changes over a particular time period for a particular school, student, neighborhood, or community. I hate to say this, no one's going to want to hear it. There are, there are some areas in districts that are always in play that they are, they're equally close to everything and they're equally far from everything and it's painful. For the, for the last ten years, or the last twelve, I was, I had that third-party objective piece of this. I didn't have any kids yet. Now I've got a two-year-old and I'm starting to understand. So, so when we do have scenarios where we're developing options and saying, hey, we really need this area to move to kind of be that linchpin in this, this particular scenario, we want to be mindful of when those changes happen historically. Are those students, we don't want to get into a situation where we're moving kids three and four times within an elementary school. We just, we want to be mindful of that and consider that and those student needs as we develop these options. And so as we, as we start to develop options, we're going to develop kind of a little heat map that just pops up and tells us which areas moved in which school year so that we're cognizant of where that happens. Special program placement. Attempt to ensure student zone to campuses are not moved or negatively impacted when distributing programs among schools. Do we have, do we have pre-K in every building? So that's, that's something that we can, we can look at. You know, pre-K is a portable program. We can move it around where there's space theoretically. Pre-K, some special ed programs, we may need to have centers in certain schools that they're very low incidence. Consider where those students are and if the programs are in the right place, if they're in the right facility as we develop these options. Again, consider the unique needs of the student population given the campus. Natural man-made boundaries. So utilizing creeks, drainage ditches, roads, railroads, things that kids can't necessarily cross easily or what makes sense geographically. Capacity utilization. Utilize projected student enrollment and capacity as principal measures in defining efficient use of facilities. This is that longevity piece again. We want to, we want to make sure that as we're creating these options, we're considering that potential growth. We don't want to make a change and then have to come back and undo it if there's growth in another area in two years, that kind of thing. Consider anticipated construction and residential growth within the community. Minimize the use of temporary classrooms that cause a school to operate at more than capacity. Promote reasonable balancing enrollment among schools to avoid overutilization and underutilization of facilities. Fiscal considerations. This kind of piggybacks off the utilization piece. Consider fiscal impact, future capital operational budgets. Consider addressing overcrowding with a boundary change versus putting a portable up. Diversity. This is, this can be a hairy, a hairy discussion item when it, when it comes to changing boundaries. I think that the simplest way to kind of explain this one is attempt to create boundaries that mirror the socioeconomic profile of the district as a whole. It, it's not putting a number on anything. It's just, we've got, we've got our big pie over here and we want to make all our little pies look the same, if possible. The balance, the, the big balance is going to be, how many kids do we have to move in order to satisfy this? And so that's, that's something that we're going to have to decide. So that's, that's what I have kind of as a discussion point. So do you want to rewind and start at the beginning?
Sure, well, I think we can just sort of dive right in if that's okay and use your collective expertise and opinion. But I think the first thing that you had was sort of that feeder pattern slide. And I thought, I was hoping that we could talk a little bit about feeder patterns first and get a sense of how, what, what level of priority all the board as individuals and then collectively feels about that. I do want to say though, based on some comments that we've gotten about grandfathering, if we could kind of put that in a parking lot and talk about that at a, at a later time because that's a decision that I think is independent of the actual attendance zones. So is that, is that okay? Yeah, all right. Okay, so, so the whole idea of feeder patterns and right now, elementary schools are not in the redistricting mix. Middle schools are, we are redistricting. High schools, we may redistrict. So does anyone have any thoughts on the idea of feeder patterns as it pertains to this particular division? Does anyone feel strongly about it? Yes, Ms. Hummel?
I feel strongly that there shouldn't be just ten or fifteen kids that are the whole ones that go to a different. I don't feel strongly, or I feel it's fine. We've got, we've got four middle schools that will be feeding into three high schools. So we can't have a perfect feeder pattern anyway. So in, in my mind, as long as there's some kind of a, a, a big enough piece of the pie for the, the students to know that they've got enough friends, enough people that they know in their neighborhood to, as they're going on to high school. So it's not ninety percent of all the kids will be going to one high school except for ten percent going to another. I have a problem with that, but I don't have a problem with sixty, forty.
Fifty, fifty, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my, so that's where I stand.
Madam Chair, I concur with Ms. Hummel. I think, given the fact that we're going to have four middle schools and three high schools, we, we really, we can't have a perfect feeder pattern. And we do have that instance now currently where a very small number of students from one middle school go to one high school and everyone else goes someplace else, so.
Let me ask you, let me back that up to the current static attendance zones in elementary. Do you want that to, are you thinking that's important? The elementary to middle, then middle to high? Or in your thinking, is it just middle to high? Do you see what I'm saying?
We're not considering elementary.
I know, but it's fixed, right? So given where everybody is now, do you want that to be part of the feeder? Do you want that to be part of the consideration on where kids go to middle? Do you get what I'm asking?
No, you've lost me.
Does, do the elementary schools have an identity after sixth grade?
No.
Okay. So that's not a fact, okay. In your view, does the idea of feeder patterns, whether it's twenty-eighty or, you know, thirty-seventy, impact any, does it impact either way a future conversation about start time? Like, I don't want to, I don't want to, that's what I question for you, I don't think. But so that's something that this board has thought about and delayed until after redistricting. So, and several of these topics, I want to at least ask that question if that's even relevant.
I, I have seen districts that will adjust their start time after we do a redistricting process. I'm not sure if it's, if it's feeder pattern driven or if it's they want their high school kids to go to school later driven. I've just, I've seen it happen. I'm not sure what the correlation is.
So is it fair to say that everybody would like more than ten percent of any middle school to go to high school?
You know, I'm looking on here because I had the feeder patterns earlier today. I think one of my main concerns is that when we're looking at, completely lost it at the moment. When we're looking at the economic impact of moving kids around and looking at economic factors, it's not having feeder patterns of like four schools that have very high free and reduced lunch all end up going to the same school. And that would be one of my criterias, not having that happen.
So, but as far as, I think.
I'm addressing what Mrs. Hummel said. I, I agree with her on the idea that you don't want just a few kids from a neighborhood.
Just a handful.
Just a handful ending up being separated from their peers.
In the ideal world, I think that, I think that's a good thing. The, the problem that comes is the kids don't come in nice, pretty little packets. And so, so you can set it up today where, where you have a certain percentage from, you know, that all works. And then in five years after a family of twenty moves and another family of three moves in and then, and then it gets to be, you know, it doesn't, you kind of go back to. So, so while I would like that, I'm not sure that I'm emotional about having that as part of the met, part of the equation into, into this. I mean, I, I think it's something that we look at, you know, and I think it's something that's, would be kind of nice if you could avoid it, but you're only going to avoid it in the first three years. And, you know, even, even at the end of the day where you have eighth graders today, you know, a couple from one neighborhood are going to one school and the rest are kind of going, I mean, I think they're all fine by, by the second week of ninth grade. So, so I'm just, I'm just not, I'm not feeling that that's something that we have to make as a, as a high priority in the equation for how you develop the redistricting scenario.
I just think it's one of those, it would be nice to consider.
Right.
weighing it against all the other things.
Right, it's kind of lower on the totem pole.
So primary criteria, secondary criteria.
Yeah, primary, secondary, tertiary. So I would say it's probably secondary.
Yeah, secondary.
Secondary, right, no?
Lower secondary, higher tertiary.
Higher tertiary, so, yeah. So two minus, is that, you know, one, two, three, two minus? Okay. Okay, all right. So then I think the next topic was this idea of neighborhoods, boundaries. I think you had that kind of in a, in a couple of different places, but this idea of what to use as dividing lines. So you want to?
Yeah, so we've got proximity and we have natural boundaries.
Right, but I also, I think that idea of natural man-made boundaries and neighborhoods are kind of a similar conversation.
How do you define a neighborhood? Because I've heard, I, there's lots of different definitions out there and I think that's just something we have to, need to be careful with.
Right. Well, I've thought a lot about this, but I'm happy to also let you all talk, so.
I think, I think one of the issues with neighborhoods is, is a great deal of disparity in terms of size. And that, what I think in the past has led to some of the concerns that parents have whose kids are in larger, however you define neighborhood. And maybe that's one of the issues is, is how do you define neighborhood?
The oldest example that, that we get thrown at us is it's, it's an HOA, a homeowners association, that's the neighborhood. And then, and then, and then you get the other pieces that, oh, well, And then, and then, and then you get the other pieces that, oh, well, we don't, we're geographically separated by a creek, we don't necessarily associate with those people, and so it's, it's murky.
Well, HOAs also can be humongous and within one HOA-
Kind of a city that's an HOA.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, some people say, oh, well, my kids go to that pool, so that's my neighborhood, but then that discounts the smaller neighborhoods that don't have neighborhood pools that end up going to somebody else's neighborhood. So, yeah, that, the HOA argument is a hard one for me to swallow.
It is.
It's hard for me to swallow.
I mean, if, if you look, if you start to dig into the, the parcel records, if you have a big, two, five, you know, five or thousand unit, single-family neighborhood, there's section one, section two, amendment A, amendment B, and it, it just keeps going. And, you know, when we go through kind of our, our options process where we start to kind of divide and divvy these up a little bit, that's when we get into that, and we start looking at, alright, well, this is one neighborhood, but is there a, is there a road that goes through it that is four lanes and twenty, and forty-five miles an hour? Those kinds of things. It doesn't have to be necessarily cut and dry that thou shalt not split a HOA.
Thanks to Ms. Ohmby, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I actually asked staff to get, to put up Google Maps, just because I'm a visual person, it's the best way that I can think about it. And I actually have, thank you for putting that up. Can we, can you zoom in? Well, no, that's fine, that's fine. But to me, I like the idea of, I actually don't like talking about, oh, no, I don't need the counterpointer. I don't like the idea of talking about neighborhoods at all, actually. I like the idea of using secondary roads as dividers, and, and, and that does two things, I think. It keeps most, what most people consider neighborhoods together, because we're generally, can we zoom back out? We're generally major arteries with cul-de-sac neighborhoods on either side because of the way that our natural environment is. But also, what I don't like about the way we're currently zoned is like, if you have, if you take Long Hill Road, for instance, or, or Jamestown Road, on the same side of the road, you'll have one neighborhood that goes to one school, and then the next neighborhood that goes to a different school, and then, and so I think, so then it, it actually becomes as if people are plucking neighborhoods, and I actually don't like that and would prefer to avoid that and think it's better if we just use secondary roads. So, all the neighborhoods on this side of Jamestown Road, or that side of Richmond Road, or this side of Lafayette Street, or that side of Sixty, or this side, you know, would go to, and then you use intersections to, to be your boundaries. And then, and generally speaking, not universally, that does happen to keep neighborhoods together, but it also doesn't pluck out neighborhoods along the same side of a road, which I think is odd and perhaps doesn't work for transportation and other, so that's just-
The balance to that is, what does that do to diversity? And so that's, that's where we, we go through and we make these great, you know, these great concepts and like, oh, well, that neighborhood was plucked out for a reason, or may have been, at one time.
Right.
Well, and then along the lines of the roads, I also, we're a joint school system. I don't think city or county boundaries should make any difference. That's just my opinion, that I don't think someone should say, I am in the city, so therefore I get to go to this school because I'm in the city. That's always, I've always been like, and if you look at the city boundaries, it looks like a rooster. So it's, it's really a bizarre-looking boundary. So anyway, that's just my, my opinion. I don't think that city or county boundaries, because they're not along, they're on, they're not on like major roads or kind of, there's some.
Well, there's secondary roads through there, yeah. I mean, for me, it's, it's about, I mean, this community has worked for decades to be one community. We have a joint library system, we have a joint school system, and I prefer to look, to Julie's point, I, I prefer to look at us as one large community that is divided by roads, the built environment, as opposed to a collection of neighborhoods. That's just my, my perspective. But anyway, you're, you're the expert, that's just what I was-
To, to your point, I have, we have had a criteria in the past that school boundaries are more than a municipality or locality boundary, and they will not align. You know, we've, we've had circumstances where communities will try to secede and start their own school district, and then they realize that they don't have any schools within their municipality. So, that, that's not uncommon for us to have a criteria like that.
Really? Sure.
Well, I mean, I think, I think neighborhood boundaries are important, I think it's, I think that there's a sense of community there. I think that's, I think in the county, that's pretty easily defined, because the county is really, you know, when people ask you where you live, you don't say Old Carr Road, you say Powantin Secondary. And so I think, I think you have a pretty, pretty easy to define that in the county, it's a city that's harder to define what a quote-unquote neighborhood is, but if you, if, you know, but the city is also defined by 199, that for a majority of it defines what the city boundary is. And so, so it's really kind of a moot point, but, I mean, I think, I think we need to show respect for the folks in the county, that, you know, they live in a neighborhood so that they, they all know everybody in the neighborhood that goes to the, whatever elementary school, whatever high school, whatever middle school. So, I think, and, and I don't know that I would break up a, a community because it has a two-lane road going through it. We don't have any communities that have four-lane roads that are breaking through it, but we, we do have some that have two-lane roads that kind of cut through it, and I don't know that, I think it's appropriate to divide that community by that two-lane road.
I think it's just hard to deal with a whole bunch of students.
We are redistricting, it's not easy.
Yes, I mean, so it's not-
I mean, it's hard by definition, so-
Easy, so, so if you, you say thou shalt not disrupt a huge neighborhood that has a homeowners' association of so many, then, then you're, it's just like you saying, limiting, we must limit to three percent. I mean, you're, you're really constricting what your, your choices are.
Right, and so, and so we, we ask them to say, we don't, we don't say shall, we say we should, and see what the maps look like, and see where, and see what they come back as. I was, are we getting one set of maps back, or are we getting a couple of sets?
We're getting, we're, you know-
So, so that helps us to evaluate that. But I think, I think we, I think going into it, we need to have some respect for the county and the, and the fact that they are, they are very subdivision neighborhood-driven.
If you look, the city could be divided in a lot of different ways, based on that, that, that idea of using secondary roads too. So I, I don't, I, I have no interest in dividing neighborhoods, but if we have to use a secondary road in order to address capacity or, or other criteria this board, so to me, I would say it's secondary, not, not primary.
Well, and also, I mean, the city could be divided that way, and they are in the elementary level, but they are not at the high school and the, in the middle school level.
They are at the high school level. Yeah, yeah, War Hill, they go to War Hill.
A very small part of the city goes to War Hill.
The little head of the turkey.
The head of the turkey.
It's always something. I have districts that there's a shark fin.
I, I also agree with the, going with the neighborhood concept, but I think the biggest challenge, and it's always been the challenge, is with the larger county neighborhoods. So if we can come up with, dare I say, the most equitable way, I, I know it's still going to, you know, there's going to be some negative impact, but some equitable way to parse those big neighborhoods. So at least you, you know, and I know we can't get down to, well, who plays with whom, and, I know we can't do that, but to at least have a, a critical mass of students that are in that neighborhood that will stay relatively together as they, you know, and as they go through schools. But to me, that's, that is, that, you know, that's the single biggest challenge.
Kind of what I'm hearing is if you got a neighborhood that has ten kids in it, we're not going to split it. If it's a bigger neighborhood that has two hundred kids in it, and there's a, a, you know, moderate thoroughfare going through the middle of it, and you can make an equitable split, then it's something that we could consider.
It's not what we would prefer-
Yeah.
But it's something that-
Could be considered.
Could be considered.
And I would say at least one map cannot split neighborhoods, at all.
Absolutely.
I mean, is that-
That, I, you know, that's, that's my thinking, this, and, and even if you do, you know, have to break up a neighborhood, there needs to be a critical mass. Every, however it gets divided, I want enough kids from this section who know each other, you know, staying relatively together as they go, as they go through school. Recognizing that it's not a perfect system, everybody's not going to be happy, you know, that's his best friend, and he's going to, you know, we can't, you can't accommodate that, it's, it's, it's just too impossible, but we can try to be as equitable as we can with that.
So, yes, I think, just to reiterate some things, having lived here twenty-five years, but have grown up in Northern Virginia and went to graduate school in Maryland, I think we are distinctly and uniquely different because we do identify ourselves as living in neighborhoods. And it's not always defined by the HOA, it is by the name of that neighborhood. It could just be a name of the neighborhood, whether it's Seasons Trace, or Indigo Park, or whatever, it's not necessarily that they even have an HOA. So I think that is unique, we do define ourselves, I would say primarily the county, but we do identify as living in specific neighborhoods. And I don't think any of these criteria can be hard and fast, I think it is going to be a combination of, I don't think we can have thou shalt, I don't, I don't think there will be any, that for any particular criteria, I think as, as best we can, I, I personally would not like to see neighborhoods split. And that is unique. So, I like the idea of the secondary roads, I also like the idea of keeping neighborhoods together, small ones and large ones.
Makes sense.
Sometimes keeping large ones together can lead to that, that neighborhood's like every other, you know what I'm saying, on a, sometimes that-
I think as much as, I think, the key is as much as possible, is, is, is the key. Like, again, I don't see any criteria that we're gonna, that's going to be the criteria, I think it's going to be a combination of as much as possible, do no harm.
Yeah, I feel like that's going to be the end, or the, the preamble to every-
Every criterion.
As much as possible.
As much as possible.
But so, on balance though, and we, so we're going to go through a handful of these, so it's going to get harder and harder, but generally, I would say, keeping neighborhoods together trumps feeder patterns.
Yes, I was going to say that. So for me, clearly, that trumps feeder patterns.
What?
We're not picking up Mrs. Hummel's comments when you speak, so we'll ask you to sit forward when you make a comment.
Sorry, we're getting too comfortable, we're getting too comfortable, sorry. So, okay, so right now, keeping neighborhoods together trumps feeder patterns.
So that would be a primary.
Yeah, and, and once again, kids don't come in nice, nice, unique packets, you know, you've got the, you've got the hundred and fifty-three at the elementary and Powantin Secondary, and a hundred and fifty-five at high school, but then you only have eighty-seven in middle school. And so eventually, those hundred and fifty-three elementary school kids are going to go to middle school, and so that's going to create a, you know, that's going to make, make it different as you go down the road.
And I don't want the edict to try to keep neighborhoods together, the, that the big neighborhood, and in order to keep the huge neighborhoods together, you're forcing a lot of change on little neighborhoods.
Right, exactly.
So, that, and, and so, that is what ends up happening.
Right, it can't drive them.
I think you really have to start, you know, I think you have to start with the premise that when a neighborhood reaches a certain size, that, you know, we're going to, it's going to have to get divided somehow. I just don't, you know, trying to keep them together as well, you know, as best you can, I, that's unrealistic for me, I, I think, but I, and I, this is where, you know, maybe there's disagreement. But if you parse out, parse a neighborhood, and that can dovetail, I think, well, with feeder schools, because even though you've, you've broken, you know, you've divided the neighborhood, this group is going to feed from this school to that school, and so-
Are there any big neighborhoods that are already divided at the elementary level?
One.
Yeah, one.
So that's a, I mean, that's a natural boundary.
Actually, two, actually two. Forts Colony also was divided, one wedge, affected one family.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, don't do that. Ms. Young, what do, what do you think?
Well, I've been thinking about what everybody's saying. I, I agree with Julie, I do not think we should be using the HOA as, as any kind of criteria, some of our HOAs are huge, and some of them are divided by secondary roads. So I definitely do not want the HOAs to be used. The idea of neighborhoods staying together and, and I, I, I like that idea, and I would also prefer that when we're looking at neighborhoods, that we also identify those neighborhoods that have been split in the past, and try not to do that to them again, with the understanding that it may happen anyway. But that would be one of the things that I would like, is not to have previously split neighborhoods be split again, because, you know, to eliminate some of the disruption in their lives. That would be important to me.
I do have just one, one thought about that, because I, I've had the experience with my kid being redistricted after two years in high school, but I've also had the experience of my kid's friends all leaving. So sometimes, although someone's, in, in looking at trying to minimize neighborhoods that have been affected in the past, the people that are left behind are a lot of times affected just as much, because all of their friends are gone. And so there's a, a lot of hardship, redistricting causes hardship not only on the, the kids that are moved to a new school, but to the ones that are left behind and have lost all their friends. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Mrs. Taylor, do you have any thoughts on this topic?
Um, as much as we could keep our neighborhoods together, I would like to do that for certain.
Are we helping you?
Yeah, absolutely. No, this is, this, you want to have this discussion now and not in January.
Right, but, but I think we're, I think this is one of the topics where we're fairly split.
Yeah. Well, that's why we're not going to have, I mean, we're going to have a series of options that we'll collect feedback on.
Right, okay. Okay. So anything else on the idea of boundaries, neighborhoods?
Well, the only other thing I, the other thing I would say is that if we, if we start talking about dividing some of the, the really large neighborhoods, plugging that feeder idea into it, and, and getting feedback from, from the parents in, in those large neighborhoods, it's like, okay, you know, I know we all can't go, there's too many of us, but this group is going to, you know, they're, they, they will stay together, and, and while it may not be the option they would prefer, it might be better than some of the other ones. Because I, I do agree, nobody should have to go through this three or four times. We've done spot, you know, I, I know about the history of that kind of stuff, and, and it, and it weighs heavily on kids, I, you know, I fully, I fully appreciate that. So I, that's why I, I think the, you know, not losing sight of the feeder part is, is important, because at least that group of kids will, will know each other, will stay together as they-
Madam Chair. I could just add to Dr. Beer's. I, I think since we're looking at middle school and high school, it's unrealistic to, to consider feeder programs, because I think if we were doing K-12, maybe that would be something we could consider, but we're not looking at K-5. So, so that, I disagree with that.
So what does that mean? If we don't do feeders with middle and high school?
Which we really-
Because I mean, every year they're going to go to different, I don't understand.
That's what they do now.
Yeah, I know, we're trying to avoid that.
Do, do you want to see an option that the middle school and the high school lines align with the elementary lines as much as possible?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Simple question.
I mean, we're, we're two variables into a multi-variable equation-
Right, yeah, we're, we're a third of the way through.
That is going to get very complicated here, very quickly.
And we're getting progressively more complicated.
Right, and so back to, to reiterate where I'm coming from, the, the two that we've discussed, feeder are the least important to me.
Right.
I just don't want a little ten or fifteen there.
I agree, however, to Mr. Kelly's point, you know, that it's a moving target, because kids grow up and they leave, and more families move in, and so I think, you know- kids grow up and they leave and more families move in, and, um, so I think, you know, the, the 10 that went to, you know, Lafayette and the 90 that went to War Hill this past year can, will change in three years, so-
We'll have the projected enrollment, so we'll be able to, to see if it's like a, I mean, if it's a 90-10 split that's trending towards an 80-20, you know, an 80-20 or a 70-30, we'll be able to see that and have that data.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
So.
Yeah. All right, so feeder patterns and boundaries, can we, okay, so the next one I think you had up was proximity, thank you for putting the Google Maps up, guys, I appreciate that very much. Um, the next one I think is proximity, do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so this, this is the one where, um, where it kind of overlaps and merges with the neighborhoods a little bit, 'cause sometimes we might have a school in a neighborhood. Consider students' proximity to campus and, and also the efficiency of transportation. And so this is attempt to get every student to their geographically closest school.
Anyone wanna jump in on this one?
Well, for me, what was insightful was, um, to, if we utilize transportation resources effectively, what that does, how that whacks out the numbers, that was, so, um, so, that was just interesting, so, it really, really makes the free and reduced lunch numbers skewed.
May, I mean, this is, this is a, this is a different district.
Right, that's not ours, it's a different division, but-
I, I think one of the positives is that the new fourth middle is in a very central location, and-
Right next to Berkeley.
It is right-
Making proximity, like, so four people will go to each school.
Making proximity not as big of a deal, honestly, because there's not gonna be that much difference between the dis-
Or that one.
It's just not, it's, it's not gonna be like, oh, I'm, it's gonna be 10 miles more to go to this school than that school, they're gonna be-
But it is a bigger issue for high school.
So, so scenarios that I've run into in growing districts are, would we take students, and, I mean, this is a, this is a drastic example, would we take students that are four miles away from one high school and put them at another high school that's eight miles away, because the growth in the closer high school is not going to be able to support those kids? That's, that's kind of where that, that comes from, you know, we have that moving target of enrollment and population growth that we're, we're trying to track, and minimize how many times we have to do this and how many kids we have to move each time, that's, that's that, that's that counterpunch to that, uh, that proximity and diversity issue.
I have a question for you, so, in, in our community, we have 15 schools, and all but one are currently at or over capacity.
Hmm.
So, how often do you run into that?
In growing districts, we run into it all the time. Uh, I, you know, the district that I'm probably most intimately familiar with, they are, they went from, let's see, when I started, there were 10,000 students, and now they're 20. And so they just opened their fourth high school.
But we're not building, like-
That fast.
No, like, our, we need schools today, and they're not, they're not online, we're looking at five years and 10 years down the road. So, we're looking at, all of our schools are going to be at or over capacity for a very long time.
We'd like them to be as equally over capacity as they can be.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think it's important, you know, to, when you're dealing with these kinds of, of struggles where you have capacity, you know, capacity of a facility is more than just classroom, you have to look at how many kids you can feed and how many lunch periods. Uh, so, before you decide to pop, you know, a, a 10-pack of portables onto a facility, can they feed that many kids in that day? I'm sealing the facility people.
Three, three, three lunch periods, right, yeah. Um, so I think, I think what I hear Ms. Ombi and Ms. Hummel saying is that proximity really can't be a, a criteria in, in, at least in middle school, because if everybody did go to their closest school, the, the, the capacity would be just whacked out. Um, I could've said that better, um, but-
Whacked out?
Yeah, sorry, I'm tired. Um, but I, I, so I, so if someone can't go to their closest school, maybe their closest, next closest, or even, so in, in several places in the more densely populated areas of, of the city, um, in, in high school, for instance, there's only one mile, one and a half miles difference between the first, second, and third high school.
You may be within two miles of three high schools.
Yes.
Right, and so, well, that's, but you're 13, 14, and 15 miles, sort of, um, so, um, so I think for me, at both the middle and the high school, um, as long as it's, it's within a certain percent, no more than a certain percentage of the nearest, 'cause I don't wanna even say the second closest, because sometimes the third closest can be within a mile. Um, and so, to me, proximity is really a very low priority, um, but what is important to me, um, is, is, 'cause I think this is related to proximity, is the, and I'd love to hear from everybody about the idea of contiguous, you know, how, I mean, how contiguous do we want them to look like quilt, you know?
More roosters.
Or no more quilts.
Turkeys.
Turkeys.
Um, so, do we want, do we want, I mean, can attendance zones be divided into two sections as they currently are, um, or can they be, 'cause there's some kind of popcorn, no popcorn?
I think should be contiguous, I personally.
Unless it-
As much as possible.
Well, unless it doesn't impact something else.
Right.
Really, really impacts-
Here we go.
Right. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with two or three sections, but not, not a, a popcorn or a quilt, you know?
I mean, I don't, I don't know that I wanna throw proximity out the window, I mean, I, I think, I think proximity's kind of important, and it's proximity, um, as you drive there, not as the crow flies.
Right, oh, yes, that's, that's what I meant.
So, just wanna make sure, make sure that, that gets said, um, but, but I think proximity to me, proximity and, um, the free and reduced, I mean, if, if you have to, if you have to drive a little bit out of the way to go to, go to a school, I think I'm okay with that, but not a lot, you know? So, I mean, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw proximity out with the bathwater, I mean, I think, I think it's, I think it's important, um, you know, particularly for those free and reduced lunch schools, that they are somewhat near their high school, so that the, the parents have a better chance of getting into the schools, um, and I don't, but I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna move kids from, from Grove to Stonehouse, right? I mean, it's, uh, we wanna make sure that, that they're somewhat near the, the school that they're, live somewhat near. Does that make sense? You look confused as you're looking at it.
Well, you said, um, well, that was elementary, and I think this conversation doesn't apply to elementary at all.
Well, yeah, I mean, but if you look, okay, so we'll go to our high schools, our high schools are really on a, on a central line through the middle of our county.
Right.
And there's a lot of county that's up in the north end that's obviously closest to War Hill, and then you have Lafayette and Jamestown, that, where the lower county is really, you know, the, the King's Mill, for instance, is probably equivalent to Lafayette and to Jamestown as far as proximity goes, so, um, you know, it's, 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 I don't know exactly where I'm going with that, but, but there's a lot of, uh, once again, the equation gets more complicated, right?
And, and the roads, that, it's really a beautiful thing, if you think about it, that so many places, if you take this road, you're gonna get to Lafayette or Jamestown in really the same amount of time.
Just trying to figure out which way's the quickest way to get there, it depends on whether the tourists are in town or the college kids are in town and-
Mrs. Young, what do you think about proximity?
Well, I, I'm looking at, to me, utilization of student transportation resources is really important, that we're effective as much as possible, and I think the way you're doing that is having things being contiguous, so that they, you can use, you know, you can pick up kids, and I, and again, then, but you can't, you have to worry about the elementary kids in there, then, at that point.
Just to Mr. Kelly's point, too, for me, proximity would be important to the extent that some students might choose to walk, particularly some of our athletes who stay, or any, any student who stays after school, my kids, um, before they got their license, and I couldn't pick them up, they walked home, so I think some of our high school students do walk to and from school, um, again, maybe it depends on, on the particular high school, um, so, for me, proximity's important, and to the extent that if students can walk to school and wanna walk to school, it, it gives them an option.
Absolutely, I mean, I-
Don't take the path.
Oh, boy, um, but I'm, I'm, I'm really talking about that densely populated area, kind of in the middle of our community, that could go in any direction and, and be there, and that's, that's, so when I say proximity is a low priority for me, I'm saying, when the closest school and the second closest school and the third closest school are all within a couple of miles, depending on which direction you go, that is a low priority to me compared to capacity, for instance, um, which I think this graph illustrates beautifully, um, or this table, rather, um, but the contiguous piece, I still don't, I wanna unpack that a little bit, because right now, our zones are not contiguous, um, there's, there's-
Pockets.
There's, there's larger pockets, and then there's smaller, like, single neighborhoods, and, um-
I think, I think, um, we could do a lot with contiguous, if we do, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, we're gonna be disrupting a lot of, a lot of people. So, that's-
So, and again, so for, for me, personally, again, we have all these criteria, but I would like to, to impact the least amount of students, to do the least harm, because all of our schools are at or over capacity, and we're not building any new schools anytime soon, so, we have to fill our new middle school, we have to do that, one high school is significantly more over capacity than the other two, so we have to alleviate that because we're not going to expand it, and we're not going to build a new one anytime soon. So for me, looking at all the criteria, I would do the least harm.
Is it, is it okay to have one school at 105% and one school at 140%?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
No, I think equal overcapacity.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Equal overcapacity, you know, we're, we're at 113, 90, and 88 for our high schools.
Okay.
And- So disruption and capacity are definitely on here, but the proximity thing, um, so what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing not important and important, and, um-
Well, maybe we get options with maps, and then we see where it goes.
Yeah. Let's, so, so proximity is important for the, okay, so who thinks proximity is important? 'Cause I really wanna understand, okay, what that means.
What she says, what she's gonna read.
Your caveat is important, and I think for him, you're the caveat that you spun on that, that, that proximity for, like, the city, when it's, it's pretty much equidistant, any of the three, then maybe it's not as important, because the first, second, and third option is kind of equal.
Right.
But if you're looking at communities right around Jamestown or Lafayette, that the proximity is maybe more-
That's common sense, yeah.
But he needs to understand our caveat.
That's common sense.
Yeah.
So there's, that's, it's not a hard, it's not-
If I can't figure it out, we've got bigger problems.
Right, so, so then I think we're all on the same-
It's proximity with a caveat.
Yeah, right, but I think we're all on the same page where it doesn't, the students don't have to go to the first closest school, right? Because if you are dead center between, um, or if you're, if you're dead center between the, the two new middles, the two middle schools in the city, for instance, and, but the population is, shifts one way, you might go the other way because it's too crowded over there.
Ask me if you understand.
Do you understand?
Yes, I understand. Now, like, so, when I lay these out and the options, we're gonna, we'll, we'll have a, a little chart that will show kinda how well we're hitting each of these, and a strength to the challenge, or a strength and challenge for this might be, yes, this maintains that proximity, but in order to get rid of that discontinuous boundary, we're moving 20% of the high school kids. So we'll, we'll have that data and be able to show that, 'cause it's, it's gonna be, again, there's not gonna be a perfect machine that we put everything into, it's gonna be a balance.
I just wanna make sure we're giving you enough clarity to do your job, do you-
Yeah, I, I, I don't have to, in, in my mind, I don't have to solve the puzzle, I have to create a series of options that kind of hits the general consensus of what I'm hearing. Uh, and, and what I'm hearing is feeder patterns aren't, aren't all that important, we wanna keep kids going to their closest school if we can, we wanna keep kids in the same neighborhood if we can, and then where we're going, where I think we're going next is capacity and utilization, and that balance is gonna be most important.
Okay. Can we talk about disruption before we talk about capacity?
Sure.
'Cause, Ms. Ombi, do you wanna talk about that a little bit, where you kind of, you're, so you're saying, if I understood you correctly, disruption at the middle school, you, you're, you're fine with, but, but you minimize at the high school.
Minimize at the high school, most definitely.
Okay.
As much as we can begin to address the, you know, capacity issues and SCS numbers, I mean, I think we need to try to balance everything, we, it is all about balance, and, and clearly, and, and maybe what we want, we can't have, I don't, I don't know, without looking at maps, I don't know, um, but I, I do know I would like to see the least harm done to the high schools. I would also like to see balance with SCS numbers, so maybe those are conflicting and contradictory and, and-
I can promise you they're conflicting.
So, we need to see-
But which?
I need to see maps, we're gonna have more than one map.
A round of three, so like, if we each individually could see three maps, I think this would be super easy, 'cause then there would be 21 maps, but, um, but there's gotta be three.
Then it would be hard, 'cause you gotta get that-
Okay, anybody else on disruption? Anyone else?
I would like to see the high schools not too disrupted, especially for kids that have been there past, you know, for rising 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, I'd like them not to be disrupted.
So, I actually, disruption is probably my lowest priority, um, I think that there's a conversation to be had at another time about grandfathering that may impact that, um, but I think that the last time we redistricted was 2010 and 2006, I think the data could suggest that we would have, we should have two more schools, which means I think this community has, like, dodged two redistrictings that probably should've happened, um, the last redistricting for high school, I think, was 10 years ago, um, so for me, it's just not a priority, um, in a growing community, I think it's unreasonable expectation to not have disruption, um, if we lived in Loudon, it would become part of everyday life, I know we don't live in Loudon, but I just think that disruption, um, including disruption, although, I mean, I, I don't aim to disrupt anyone intentionally, and if, if a side effect is little disruption, then I'm, then I would celebrate that and, and be excited about it, but I don't, I think it's hamstringing us, and I don't, and I, so I, I think we have, I advocate for not putting it as a, as a priority, um, because I think it hamstrings us too much, and, and I think it results essentially in what, at the high school level, if we decide to do high school, it essentially equates to spot redistricting, which I don't support at all, so, yeah.
Okay, so, well, one, if we were in Loudon, we'd be building schools, and we're not building schools, just put that out there, two, anytime soon, um, two, I wanted, I planned to bring up an idea that I think would allay a lot of student angst, which is out there, and you wanna table it, but like, what you just said, the grandfathering, I think if we did discuss that tonight, like, if, if we could agree on what I'd love to talk about, then I might be willing to take that off the table as well, but, so, like, can we talk about grandfathering? Because I think that impacts, it certainly impacts my ability to disrupt.
So-
And I think it would allay a lot of angst in the community, if we could discuss grandfathering.
Can we discuss grandfathering at the work session in October to give, to give staff, 'cause then, that's when we're, to give staff time to think about that, no, is that, I'm-
They can't think about it until, until you do maps.
It's independent, for sure.
Yeah.
Not for my thing. So with, without having that conversation, I want the least disruption possible, if I could have that conversation, I might change my mind, I would probably change my mind on that particular criteria. So for me, it's, the two are closely tied.
The, the volume and pitch of community feedback will be different based on that grandfathering discussion.
I don't think we have the data, and staff's not ready to talk about that tonight, so I don't-
That's fine.
No, I'm, I'm just, as long as we can, if we talk about it before we go to the community in November, December, I think that's, that's, well, I'm saying, as long as it's talked about before then, I'm good.
And so without that conversation, the least amount of disruption is high on my list.
Dr. Heron?
It's gonna take some time to even get the numbers if we start to talk about grandfathering, it's, it's gonna be all over the place, in terms of movement and transportation and identifying students, some take the bus, some don't, it, it's, it's gonna be very complex.
Still haven't-
Current, how much does current attendance zone matter in this, in middle or high school? And I think that, that, I think- And I think that, that, I think everyone's, no one seems to be upset about it in middle, but the high school people want to.
Because there are other kinds of disruption than also students experience besides geographical ones. So, I, I, it's, it's not that it, you know, it's not important, but, um, I, I think that's, I would think that's the least difficult kind of disruption. So, I'm, I'm sort of along with you. I don't, um.
Madam Chair.
I don't have as high a priority. That's not, it doesn't.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. For me, disruption is a three-year problem. And, and actually, it might even be, it might be a little bit more than that when you start thinking about it. But if, if, if we're not going to consider current attendance zones in our, in our high schools, I don't think, let's take middle schools off the table for a second, if we're talking about high schools. I think, I think it would, I think we should say to the community that we intend to do, if possible, to grandfather folks in. And I think, I think we can work through that. Because.
At what level?
At high school.
At what grade level would they like?
If they're in the high school, if they, if they're in ninth grade and we redistrict, they go to 10th. Now, the question you have is, is if they go to 10th and their brother's in eighth, what do you do with their brother?
No.
Two different high schools?
Yep.
So, it's easy for us to say, but, I mean, there's members of the community who have, who have gone through that and who didn't like it. But just, but just, you know, just to do that. But, but I think, I think if we, if we.
Send the ninth grader to the, the high school and the eighth grader.
Okay, so, I, I understand that. Do we wait till all students have graduated from high school before we return to the diversity issue?
We haven't talked about the diversity issue yet.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
So, we have, so we have, that, that, that equation hasn't come into our calculus. That variable hasn't come into our calculus equation yet.
No, and that's the elephant, and we haven't really, we haven't brought that up at all.
That was last on his slide, so that's, I'm going, I'm going.
But I think if, I think if, if someone has started a high school, I think we, we say that it is our intention that they, to commit to having them finish. Because if we start it at 10th, when the 10th grade, then the next year it's, it's the 11th and 12th graders, and it's just the seniors, and so the problem goes away in three years. And I think we can get there.
Do you give them the choice?
Correct. They can either go to whatever, whichever high school, the one that they're zoned for or for, or the one that they're.
Hey, well, I think you're just going to create another, another kind of diversity issue if you do that.
Dr. Heron?
Choice, we can't predict, and we, we don't know how full our schools will be. I think we probably need to go one way or the other, stay at the same school by, by grade level, because we can't, it's hard to produce maps when we've absolutely no idea what students will do and actually calculate numbers as to what it's going to look like on the ground.
So, capacity would be completely unpredictable for three years at all three high schools?
Especially when we don't have a lot of room anywhere. So, if you consider, so, if you start to give choice, if they were all at 80%, perhaps it might, there'd be lots of room for students to have a choice.
I think the last redistricting was high school, it was the senior year.
That would make some sense.
That's typically what I've seen most districts do.
And that potentially, you can have a closer calculation than taking it three years of students making a choice. You might as well say, go wherever you want, everybody.
Right.
And we'll, we hope everybody doesn't land in the same place.
Well, just, no, I mean, if, if a kid's going to Lafayette today and is, in a zone for Jamestown, they can't choose to go to War Hill.
That's true.
So, so they're, so they're, so they're choosing between Lafayette or Jamestown. And so, and then, and then the next year, that problem goes away by a third because then the 12th graders have graduated and the kid who chooses 10th grade year to go to Lafayette is going to Lafayette for three years. So, I, I don't know that, I don't know that it's going to, and then, and it's, and it's only for the kids who are, who are currently in the school. As the eighth graders come up, where, you know, you, they go to the zoned high school. So, it's a problem that goes away after a couple of years.
It just doesn't fix your issues and a balance immediately.
Doesn't fix my today issues necess, necessarily.
But it could severely negatively impact capacity.
I don't know if it's severely, but.
Well, depends on how many kids get redistricted. If, if, if the school board adopts a map that redistricts more than 100 kids at the high school level, and all those kids decide to go at, to one school.
I mean, we've got to assume that we're not going to go on the, on the outside, that we're going to be somewhere in the middle. So, but, you know, we're going to be more severely impacted by the 64 getting finished than we are by pretty much anything else.
True.
I, I just don't, I don't agree with that, uh, freedom of choice, because, or the grandfather, because it's the responsibility of the board to divide up the district, to make decisions about where, where students go to schools. And turning over that response, if you say to parents, well, you can go here, you can go there, I just, um, I don't support that notion.
Thank you, good.
I think we're creating capacity issues if we do that.
Could be.
And we could be. And, I mean, to me, one of the objectives of doing this whole process is to, to lessen some of the issues that we're facing right now, is not to create more problems. So.
Madam Chair, for me, I would take Mr. Kelly's idea, and, and I would like to see the students currently in high school stay in the high school. I wouldn't necessarily give them a choice. And then maybe that's more predictable. But I think students, even ninth graders, after having completed one year in their high school, begin to make relationships with the teachers who are going to be writing their, their letters to colleges. Some students start working their freshman year to be, you know, captain of whatever athletic team, or to be the drum major of the band, or, you know, to direct the play, whatever. So, research does tell us that it is, we, it does negatively impact high school students the most. I think if, if we're, the long-term picture, we can, we can look at balancing SES, but I think we don't want to impact the students. If we can mitigate impacting the students today with a long-term vision, I'm more willing to, to, to create more disruption.
So, this happened to my daughter.
I know.
She was at Jamestown for her freshman and sophomore year, and then we were redistricted to Lafayette. And there were only 40 kids that were redistricted to Lafayette. And some, some parents, the, all the kids, of course, are distraught. They've been at school for two years. And some, some parents opted to, like, move and, so that they could stay in Jamestown. Then, we were of the opinion that life's going to throw you curveballs and you're going to make the best of whatever situation occurs. And programmatically, I must say, Lafayette did a phenomenal job of welcoming those students. They made sure that there were spots on student council for them. They made sure that there were opportunities for them to be involved. So, I think programmatically, at an administrative level, the schools, the receiving schools can do a lot to alleviate some of these, these problems. And so, for my daughter, it ended up being a great experience after all. It was hard going through it, but she ended up being a really proud RAM and playing on the field hockey team, star, you know, being a, a lead in the plays. There, there was no, like, she didn't slow down or feel like she couldn't participate in any of the activities simply because she transferred in as a junior. So, I would just say that, don't, don't cut our schools short in what programmatically and administratively they can do to, to make the transition easier for the receiving students.
One other thing that we discussed, you know, kids are resilient. We haven't discussed that. Yeah, most people don't like change, but I think, while I'm on board for minimal disruption, I think we'd be surprised at how much more resilient. We're not giving them credit for that, and, so.
I just don't, I'm not opposed to grandfathering. I just don't think we can tie it to this conversation because we just don't have the data. And without the data, I'm not comfortable making that commitment or endorsing that commitment as part of this process. And I think if really the priority is a minimal disruption, we might as well just consider not doing it at all, which I don't support. But I think, you know, if we're willing to disrupt some kids, um, so, I just, that's why it's a low, low priority for me.
I guess the, the piece that would help me is if a student was impacted in middle school, is that a consideration that should be given at high school? About disruption? I'm, I'm thinking of multiple disruptions per student in their career.
But they're moving anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if they're.
And I don't think that's possible.
They've aged out.
They've aged out, so that's not, that's not possible, yeah. Families maybe, but not, not students.
Okay, okay. That's what I had, that's, that's just the one piece that I wanted to answer, and it's been answered.
Okay, so, I think we're fairly, so I think we're fairly split, again, on the disruption. So, we're split on prox, on, on boundaries, on, on neighborhoods, and then we're split on disruption. Proximity and feeder patterns, I think we kind of came to consensus there, but, but, okay. Anything else on, on the current attendance zone? All right, let's move on to capacity. So, anyone want to jump in on capacity? Their thoughts on that topic?
They all need to be equally over.
Do they now? All need to be equally overcapacity.
When?
Today.
Well, I mean, if we have, if we have an area that is projected to grow.
Right.
Should we underload that, that particular zone to accommodate that growth so that we, we're not back here again trying to balance something that is out of balance?
Good point.
And vice versa.
We get to stay where we're at, we get to stay where we're at and not change high schools.
Well, and, and, that's possible. And vice versa, if we have, if we have an area that's aging out and declining at a moment, can we overload that in the near term, knowing that it's going to decline as those larger classes?
I don't think any area in our neighborhood is going, in this community is going through decline.
Okay.
I don't know. Are there areas in Williamsburg, James City County that are?
That are aging, so fewer kids, yeah. I mean, as a, as a whole, we're aging, so it's more, more older adults.
I think we find that in, in, at least in the county that I have seen, and I don't know that I have a scientific study of that, that, is that the community ages out and then kids move in. So, so like the, I don't know, let me go with Windsor Forest, for instance. There used to be a lot of kids, they, they aged out, and now younger kids are moving back in there, so.
But as a whole, the aging, the senior population is becoming more and more a percentage, like, a third of our population, I think, in, is going to be over 65 in 15 more, 13 more years.
I think that's, I think that's macroeconomics and like the microeconomics of where people are living.
I'm talking about, yeah, I'm talking, right.
But, I mean, they're all, yeah, so they'll move, so you get, maybe, maybe in Newtown or, obviously Colonial Heritage, you'll get a lot of people that are, that are over 55, but I don't know about the rest of it. I mean, we're, redistricting's tough enough, trying to predict where this county's going to grow is, is another dimension that I'm not sure I want to get to.
But you think.
Because we, because the last time we did this, all the growth was in the center of the county. So, that all, every, you know, on the, on the primary service area, that, all that, that's where all the growth was going to happen. I mean, there's, there's already, I don't know, 1,200 building permits out in the county? Maybe more than that? That have been approved and ready to build, ready to build today? So, where's that going to happen? Ford's Colony, Kings Mill, Governor's Land?
Well, I'm not, I, I think I'm more interested in new growth.
Yeah.
As, as opposed to existing neighborhood churn.
Building permits.
Right, and so, so that's, so that's my question is, in the, the Future Think Report is what you're using, I presume, does that include building permits? Do we, do we know that?
I talked to Tracy today, I'm actually going to have a meeting with her tomorrow, and I can ask her about it.
Okay. Because, because I think, for me, redistricting, I mean, I'm fine with, because there's going to be enough flexibility in middle school, once the new school comes online, I'm fine with doing that at equal capacity. That's because there's enough wiggle room in there, but the high schools are so tight that I think we should put, I think we should consider where the growth, where growth is based on building permits. And if, if we know that growth is fairly stagnant near one high school because it's built out, should we put more kids in that school and put it closer to capacity and then leave more room in, in the schools where we anticipate more growth and more built, new, new, more, more new construction?
Which high school do you want to pick?
I don't know. That's not, that's beyond my pay grade. But also, I think, for me, the bottom line, the bottom line on capacity is how many years of stability is this going to buy us? If it buys us three years, I don't know that it's worth our time or worth the disruption. But the connection to the CIP is really important, so, you know, is it in three years that we have, three CIPs from now that we've asked for? Or they didn't include, in our CIP request, it was three years, right?
We asked for extensions on all of our high schools, and they were removed from the CIP by the, the county.
Right. So.
And the recommendations.
But we can ask again.
The recommendations of the CIP are in process right now, and based on our current enrollment, it's very likely that they will be under consider again, on consideration again.
One of the things that sort of puzzles me, Mr. Kelly made, 1,200, like, that's already in the works, 1,200.
Proofed.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm looking at the projected enrollment, this, it's low, to 2026, 27. And from 2017, 18 to 2026, 27, I see an additional whopping 300 students in growth. So, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, um, if we're, if they're building all, if all these units are going to get built, and assuming that, you know, kids are going to come in, why this, these, these projections are, I, I know they're low, but they just, only 300 additional students by 2026? Has anybody else looked at that table?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that table.
I know.
But those, and those, those, those building permits, and I can't even remember what the number is, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's 1,200, it was, it was a significant number. But they have been on the books for a long time, and then, and so with the recession, they haven't been built. And so, but they're still, they're still out there. Now, I'm going to take you back to Six Lanes between here and Norfolk. And.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That's, I, I think that makes our numbers go from a low projected enrollment to something better than that. So, you know, I, I just, and I don't know that when, when they did that enrollment study, that they considered that, that in a couple of years, when that, when that road is Six Lanes, that would affect, that may potentially have.
I think this is probably a couple of years ago. We were looking at this a year or so ago, and we were talking about.
And before all the trees fell down.
Remember, there was a high, we had a high.
Right.
And we had a low, and I didn't, there wasn't a high in here, so I didn't have to, I couldn't see that.
What, what do you typically recommend to school boards in this situation in terms of whether capacity should be equally loaded across a certain level or whether it should be shifted?
I, I think that we should use the projections to anticipate, you know, if we have, if we have the students that are in the system of the lower grades and we know they're coming, we should absolutely make room for them. Otherwise, if we don't, we're going to be back here again trying to do a spot zone, and I've already heard that nobody likes those.
Problem is, we don't know that they're coming, we think that they're coming.
Well, it makes it a little easier at, because we're just dealing with middle schools and high schools, is that those kids are there, and we can, we can see the kids that are in the elementary schools, and they're, they're actualized. We're not, we're not projecting those, per se. And so, I think it'll make it a little easier from that standpoint.
So, you, you must have access to the projected enrollments that are high.
Mm-hmm.
Because at that, it wasn't in, I've seen it before, and I just can't remember what the numbers are, so those, that's probably.
We'll have a, we'll have an updated report as we start to develop the options.
Okay.
What do you think?
Do I think?
Yeah, whoever, about equal versus projections.
I, I feel like at the middle school level, because our capacities are going to be in the 80% wise, that even is good, because that gives us room for growth everywhere. In the high school level, that's a different question. Because, I mean, as far as do you, do you try to predict growth? The problem at the high school level is that we're at, or they're all going to be at 98%. And so you have no growth anywhere that, that you can accommodate for. You can make one 103 and the other one 96, but you're kind of, we kind of have a problem. So we got to, we had to figure something out there. So I would, at the middle school level, for me, because we're going to be at a relatively modest capacity, you know, actually, I wouldn't say modest, I would say a right-sized capacity, that if all, all the middle schools are, are at this, go for the same percentage, you know, I think we're good. Now, the way, the way, the way this was projected to be is that in five years, we were going to build 300 additional students at the fourth middle school presumably to be named James Blair. But...
You haven't gotten to that yet.
I know, it's a different agenda, right? But, and so then we'd have to be redistricting again. I mean, so we're going to have to be here again. And I don't, and I don't think that any of us would presume that we would just redistrict here, assuming that, that the fourth middle school is going to be 900. Because we all know how hard it is to build a school in this community, or at least how hard it was to build this middle school. So, you know, the end of the day, we're going to be at this table again, no, let me phrase that, somebody will be at this table again, doing middle school redistricting in potentially five years.
I, I agree with you. I think we should be balancing the numbers in the middle school for a lot of reasons. Just for things like high, or middle school sports teams and all the kind of things, just to, if it's, and it seems like it's going to be easy to do that, so why not?
But once again, your, your, your middle, it's percentages, not, not numbers.
So this will be a smaller school.
Right, so this is 600, and Hornsby's 900, so 80% of 900, 80% of 600 is a different, is a different number.
Okay, so forget that. But you're still equal capacity as a percentage of the whole?
Okay.
Yeah?
We, we've been averaging, at least for the last 10 years, 100 new students every year, 125, I think, because of... But, but it's state, you know, I don't see anything that's going to suggest that that's suddenly going to change or drop. It might actually go up, but obviously what that means in, you know, five years from now, that's another, you know, 600 students are going to be in the system. So you're, you're right. The projections are, you know, critical in terms of making sure that there's room, you know, space for, for those students.
So what I'm hearing is, at the middle school, we want them to be pretty, pretty close to the same utilization. We're still going to look and make sure that there's nothing on the horizon, the projections in the next five years, just to make sure that it's sound. And then at the high school, we want to look at considering that balance for growth so that we aren't necessarily back at the table at the high school level in the short term.
What are the numbers going to be at the middle school again? The, not the percentages, but the actual number of kids?
That's whatever Mrs. Young says.
Forty.
One of the caveats is the, the actual growth in enrollment was not, has not been in the elementary. And, or the middle school level, except, except one, it's been at the high school level. It's like, you know, they're, they're just coming through, so... That, you know, that, it's, it's almost, it's a little confounding, because it's like, okay, if elementary is stable, is it going to continue to be stable? And that means they're, we're not going to have growth, or, you know, they are, they are tricky to interpret.
And we'll look, we'll look at, I mean, I, I live in the same town as Tracy, so we talk. And, you know, I'll talk to her and see, hey, is there something funny going on in ninth grade where we're getting kids coming in from, from outside the system? And so we'll look at those kinds of things.
Have anything, any thoughts, Dr. Young? So...
There is actually one thing, is, is students may drop out of the middle school here in the district, but when it's time to go to high school, they come back in.
It's the place to be. So I, I think we're at a point where we've agreed to equal percentage capacity at the middle school and then using projection group.
Yeah.
But I have three questions related to capacity that, you know, again, back to this idea of getting years of stability and not having to come back and do this again. So I think if I saw Mr. Schnipe's hand gestures appropriately, you know, the idea of just putting, what are we calling them, mobile learning cottages at schools, doesn't necessarily solve the issue because you still have to feed those kids. And so then you get inequities of, you know, adding lunch, and then, you know, access to other facilities becomes, becomes difficult. And then also, I know you can't answer this question now, but at some point when maps are created, I'd like to understand if we adopt this map, this map, or this map, the impact on programs. We, we asked you about programs, but if, if you think a program would shift because of a population shifting, I, I, I'd just like to be clear-eyed about that when we get to that point, if that's knowable, and it may not be knowable. But if it is knowable, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like us all to be aware of that. And then I just think this highlights the, the tieback to the CIP. And our, you know, the data are clear. We need, we need, we need space for our kids. So anything else on capacity? No, no. Okay, thank you. Okay, now the topic of socioeconomic balance. Want to talk to us a little bit about that, or should we just dive right in?
I think you guys are, you guys are doing great. You guys have dived right into it.
Okay. Anyone?
Well, I like the idea of the big pie. So, and actually, this was a conversation that I had with four of my constituents at lunch today. So I think the demographics in Williamsburg are changing, and fully, like, 36% of our, of Williamsburg children, Williamsburg, James City County students are receiving free and reduced lunch. So as much as possible, if, if that 30-ish number can be reflected in all of our schools. And I think for the most part it is, except for three schools, which are distinctly under that, so.
Are those elementary schools?
Middle, one elementary, one middle, and one high. So we could certainly impact two.
The old, old adage is, is that the smaller, the smaller the pie, the circles get, the harder it is to make them diverse. So when you're dealing with smaller groups, populations, and geographic isolation, it's more difficult. But since we're not dealing with elementary schools, I, we should be okay. It's just going to be that balance of, of socioeconomics and that minimal impact. That's the, that's why I get the big bucks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, well, that's, and that's where your criteria starts to come into conflict.
Right.
So when you start talking about proximity, and then you start talking about socioeconomic, that's, that's where things start getting interesting.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
And I think that you're right, Mr. Kelly. I think proximity and socioeconomic balance are a challenge at the elementary school level. But I think that our, our housing patterns are such that at the middle and high school level, because of where our middle and high schools are, that I think balance, equitable balance is actually possible. I think the two things that give are the, the idea of disruption or current attendance zone. I think that gives when comparing socioeconomic balance, or when looking at that. I also think the other thing that, that potentially gives is keeping whole, large neighborhoods together that are near the center of everything. I think that can be a barrier. But I don't think proximity is. I think that there, I think there are areas that are socio-economically distressed that are equidistant to, roughly equidistant to all three high schools and more than one middle school, I'll say. So I think that that's actually possible. Contiguous zones is also probably something that gives. But we've already given on that, and I think frankly, we can tighten that up. That's just my, my opinion. And I, and I think for me, capacity and socioeconomic balance are probably the highest priorities. Dr. Beers, what do you think about that?
Well, I, you know, I've, I've, this pattern has been really around since the last redistricting. And it would actually, it actually started back in 2006. And, and I, and there was cherry-mandering, you know, I've seen language that the, you know, our attorneys have used to try to avoid. And it's, it has led to, you know, one elementary school at 65% free and reduced lunch, one middle school at 48.78%, and one high school at 38.12%. So all the research I've read said that if you reduce the amount, number, the percentage of kids in one of the high schools and spread them out another, so that there's a smaller percentage, those students do better in school academically. I'll be happy to cite that for you if you want to see that. So I'm, I very much support shifting these numbers around.
Yeah, I agree, I like to see them leveler, leveler. I just don't know that with all the rest of the criteria, that we're going to be able to get to 36% all the way across. But, you know, I, I think maybe leveling those numbers out is certainly something we should look at. But we just have to look at it with the reality that every school is not going to be at 36%.
And I think today, we received an email from somebody that pointed out that our graduation rates for our, our high schools aren't that disparate. And one of the things that I think, which was a very good point, is that by having smaller, smaller number of kids in certain high schools, and Lafayette in particular, there, there you have the opportunity for a more zero-in approach to those kids that need additional help. So I, while I, I understand the disparity here, and economically, I'm not sure that I think that's the biggest criteria for me.
Just to ask, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, Dr. Heron, but do, does Lafayette, I mean, I think that there's a presumption that a smaller school has smaller class sizes. Is that, is that correct?
No, that's not necessarily the case at high school.
That's necessarily true, right.
So that argument to me is, that argument, it doesn't ring true to me.
Except for the fact of graduation rates.
But the argument of, of that being, because the school is smaller, doesn't ring true to me.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't know that changing the, moving 1,200 students or 600 families is something that I want to see done either, so.
I don't know that those numbers are true either.
Yeah, I don't know that those numbers are true. We have no, we don't have those statistics yet, but I, as I said, I, one of my criteria is as much disruption at the high schools, I'd like that to be as limited as possible, understanding that it might probably well be. But still, I think it's critical not to disrupt high school students.
Well, I think none of these can stand alone, and they all affect each other. And that is the big balancing act, yeah.
Kumbaya, kumbaya. I mean, for me, the current disparity in socioeconomic status at the high schools is discouraging, because I think it perpetuates inequities. And not only are there more kids on free and reduced lunch at one high school, but that, there are, those disparities are compounded. They're compounded by the activity fees at each school, and we see that in our audit every year. And then we don't see the numbers, but I'm, I'm willing to bet that those numbers for both the booster, athletic boosters and band boosters and the PTAs, that it's compounded. So I think we are, and it's not just the current free and reduced lunch numbers. For me, it's also the trend in, you know, Jamestown has increased by eight percentage point, eight percent, eight percentage points in free and reduced lunch number. Warhile by 9%, I, I think in the last, since the recession, and then Lafayette by 18%. And so it's not just a snapshot, but it's a trend. And I feel that we are creating a self-fulfilling prophecy of inequities and fulfilling, and fulfilling that. And I think we just need to disrupt that, because we have three amazing schools, as Mrs. Young said. When you look at the data, and even though some hold those perceptions, I do not hold those perceptions. I think it's incumbent upon this board to make a statement about the unity of this community by making the big pie and the little pies all look as similar as possible. So I, although I don't want to, you know, hamstring you into numbers anymore than I want to hamstring you into, you know, no disruption, but I would really struggle to support a map that didn't, didn't reflect that at least as closely as possible.
I agree with you.
So some sense of the level of agreement on that?
Yeah, are we?
Well, the other thing that I, that I noticed is that when you look at the chart, Jamestown and Warhile have virtually remained unchanged in terms of their percentage. But Lafayette from, or where is it, from 2012 to 2016, went from 29% to 38%. So they've remained relatively the same. No, I, I just, I, I, I think it has to be addressed, and I think it's really important.
And it does become kind of, at some point, there's a tipping point where, as Mrs. Cook said, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. And, and then people, they, they make decisions based on this new reality, and then it becomes a worse reality, and then it's just a very bad cycle, so.
But I don't think we're unanimous on that, is that correct? No? So, anything else on socioeconomic balance? So I think we agree that disruption in middle school is okay. And that capacity in middle school is balanced. And then we'll rely on your expertise to, to inform that on high school. But I, and I think that proximity with common sense, so where...
Look with that, good luck with that subjective criteria.
Well, I mean, you know, no more than, you know, 15%, 20%.
Not as common as you think it is.
Farther than the close.
I think you might find that it's not that, I think it's going to be okay.
I know the best words.
I'm going to hear them.
But I think, so the idea of how to use boundaries, or how, what, how much of a priority boundaries are, specifically defined by neighborhoods, is a bone of contention. Where we're, I think, fairly equally divided. The disruption idea, I think we're divided, but not equally. Maybe kind of five to two, or three to, well, maybe three to fours. And then socioeconomic balance, I think we're also divided. So I don't know if you can translate that into three maps that each one of us, even if we're not in agreement? Like, if each one of us can like one map, I think you've succeeded. You know, because we're not going to, yeah.
Still a couple steps in the process left. Public hearing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so we're not sending them off to go do work just yet.
No.
There's, there's still some other steps to go.
You bring me to my next point, thank you. So is there anything else about the criteria that we've, so, so that, so the public input process? We have a public hearing on this at our next meeting on, in two weeks. process, we have a public hearing on this at our next meeting on, in two weeks. In the meantime, we have opportunity for public input. Is that correct, Dr. Heron?
Yeah, that's correct. There'll be something up on our website tomorrow that will allow the public to comment on criteria and give us their opinions, and that will stay open until the day after the public hearing, and then it'll close. And it's really an opportunity for those who can't be present for a public hearing to have their voice heard through another means, and then we'll close it all down just after the public hearing and provide the information to, to you as a board and to the company, the corporate strategies.
And then after that, you'll take this conversation and convert it to a draft recommendation for discussion at our October work session, and then in, at the October nineteenth meeting? Is that right? Did we, I think up there you said seventeenth, but I believe it's nineteenth if I'm, is that, is that correct? Can you guys double check that? Oh, man, my computer.
Seventeenth?
That's what's on there, but I think it's.
It's the nineteenth. Okay, we'll get that.
Well, let me double check. I'm, Janet, can you check for me? Is it? Okay, sorry.
It's the nineteenth?
Seventeenth?
It is the seventeenth. Okay, I'm sorry. I was wrong.
On the wrong month. It is the seventeenth.
Sorry, my, my apologies.
October seventeenth.
Okay.
Is the voting?
Yeah, and that's when we'll vote. So are there any other?
So your vision on our vote?
There's a.
We're voting on like the, your top three criteria?
There's a resolution?
Yeah, I just have a sample resolution, kind of at the end. So this is just the wheres, wheres, whereses.
Where's Olentangie, by the way?
Uh, it's just north of Columbus, Ohio.
Okay, thank you.
Funny name.
Olentangie.
Tangy.
I'm not sure what it is. I should probably know.
Lot of money.
And this is just an example of, of what they, they wanted to simplify it, and this is what they came up with. But it, it could just be a resolution, or it could be a, a nod.
Or it could be a set of bulleted criteria as part of an agenda item because some are known and some are unknown right now.
Yeah, that's fine. Whatever format you all recommend is fine, I think.
Okay, so this is all the whereses, and you go to the, you go to the next one where it has the criteria. I see a lot of shoulds, as often as possible, after consideration. It doesn't seem real hard and fast, but that's probably okay.
Yeah, it's not measurable, right? Yeah, but, yeah.
Well, it's, it's measurable in that we can measure each of the individual criteria. It just doesn't prioritize, this particular one does not prioritize the criteria over the other. From what I'm hearing here, we want that.
I think we found some that you can prioritize.
I think the thing that we can all agree on is that, that we're not going to please everybody. We already know that. We are not going to please everybody. We, in the end, we may please no one, so we'll do the best we can.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Leopold, thank you very much.
Oh, this has been great. Thank you for having me. This is fun for me.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Heron, to you and your staff.
That is fun for somebody.
We appreciate the, I particularly appreciate the level of transparency that it seems that your firm is used to, and so that's something I think this community will, will appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, you know what? The next item is seven point zero two, naming the fourth middle, and that's under information discussion, but I think it should be under proposed agenda now that I think about it because it's going to be on our next meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So let's, let's pretend that's what it is. And, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you're aware, there has been an assumption that the, the fourth middle school is currently named James Blair Middle School, and that was the assumption of a previous board. However, the board hasn't taken an official vote to literally name the school, and per board policy, the, the school board will need to vote on the name for the new middle school. Also, in board policy, there allows for an opportunity for public input, and we're recommending to the board that a, an online form be posted on the division website for ten days, starting tomorrow, to garner some public input, and then bring back to the board for voting at the next meeting. We need a vote on the name of the fourth middle school so that we can then begin the process of selecting a mascot and school colors and all the, all of the things that are important to, to a new school.
I'm going to ask questions to Mr. Kelly. He seemed anxious to talk.
I'm just wondering how it came up with the spiders with James Blair, but that's another thing.
The what?
Will, will, I'd really get comment, and I mean, I would, I've always been under the presumption it would be James Blair, so.
Is there any, is there any recommendation regarding the name?
It's really a school board decision to name a school, but we obviously have been under the assumption that the name of the school is James Blair also.
Dr. Heron, so on the survey that will be open to the community, will it just be open into question, like what's your recommendation or?
Open comments, open, open input, no list of names. And in this situation, there, we don't know the population going to the school, we don't know the students, we don't know the teachers, there is no, there's no formal way to do community input. This just allows for a, a public voice for a short time, and then the board will ultimately make the decision on the name of the school.
But the decision has to be made relatively soon so that you can put something on the gym floor, right?
That's correct, Mr. Kelly.
Right. Yeah, I think the, the need to do this now was brought to our, brought to our attention recently, so just to make sure we take that vote. I support naming it James Blair because of the historical importance of being, of being the first joint, jointly-run school by our joint division, so I think that's something we want to preserve.
I think there's a lot of history with James Blair, a lot of history in our community, and, and I'd like to retain it as well.
Likewise.
I agree.
Okay. Great, so we'll get that on.
We agree. We agree.
Is, is the survey also going to talk about the mascot?
No.
No, that will come after we have an official name for the school, and that will be an administrative-driven process to, to work through the mascot and the colors. But thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Okay.
Make sure Laurel Lane had the penguins, so I can make sure.
Anything else? Okay, so that moves us to policies which, after assuming the discussions go well, we'll go on our consent agenda for the next meeting. So eight point zero one, retire policy, G C B A A professional staff and national board certification recognition. Does policy committee want to toss it, just toss it to?
Mr. Baker's here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think both of our policies this evening are under the Department of Human Resources. Mr. Baker's here to talk about those.
They're both chief office, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, we're just trying to simplify our policies as we review them. Policy, G C B B A A professional staff, national board certification, we propose retiring it. This content is actually covered under policy, G C B A staff salary schedule. There is no V S B A policy, G C B A A. Regarding national board certification, the program is not being canceled. We just don't need to have a policy for this. The board approves our pay scales and classification book every year, which includes the following statement of, to the extent that funds are available, faculty honored achieving national board certification will receive an initial salary adjustment of five thousand dollars and a subsequent award of twenty-five hundred dollars each year for the life of the certificate. So we're just proposing, we don't need this policy to do this. So we're going to propose to retire.
Any questions? And have our national board certification, have the employees that are, that are not impacted by this at all, just been informed so that they're not worried?
We're working with Teresa Redd and the folks there to work with them, about communicating with them.
Okay, great. Okay, and then on to retire policy, G D C, G D D, support staff recruitment, hiring, policy and procedures.
Right, again, there is no V S B A policy, G D C, G D D. This is actually, this content is actually covered under another one of our policies that we updated in the last several months, policy, G B N. There is no need to have this policy, so we suggest that we retire it.
Any questions?
I just wanted to clarify that these procedures are already, if you want to tell everyone that, that.
Yeah, we have them in, in writing for us.
Like that, that was my question on the, like, where is it, or where can someone go to see this information? And so Mr. Baker told me that it's.
We have, we have the procedures ourselves in H R, and if people need them, we have them. But there is no V S B A policy to have this.
Madam Chair, not for negative garbage, but the board certification recognition, do we know why that policy came to be? Was it, I mean, was it, was it a statement by the board that we wanted to encourage national board certification?
I wasn't here in nineteen ninety-nine.
Neither was I.
I don't know.
But I mean, I was just, you know, I, I think, I think the, if I, if I read tea leaves, I think it's just that it was just there to, to put that, you know, the school board had a policy that we would prefer our teachers to strive towards national board certification.
We still do, and we still encourage it.
Right.
But we don't have to have that policy.
I mean, I agree, because in line eighteen, national board certificate is valid for ten years from date of certification, that's now five, and they don't care about our policy when they change that, so.
Right.
So anyway, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, with our teachers still understand that we, we, we think it's a good thing and we will continue to support national board certification.
And we do vote on it, or apologize, y'all do vote on it every year as part of the salary book, and it's in the book, and that exact language is there.
And we acknowledge when teachers receive that designation, we.
Correct, no, we, we value it.
Yeah. All right, anything else on policies? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker. Next up is personnel actions, nine point zero one. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Okay, item nine point zero two, approve release from compulsory attendance case number R eighteen dash zero one. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I, I knew that we approved release from compulsory attendance case number R eighteen dash zero one.
Second, please. Any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Motion passes. Nine point zero three, approve release from compulsory attendance case number R eighteen dash zero two. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve agenda item, sorry, what is it? Nine point three, approve release from compulsory attendance case R eighteen dash zero two.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. All right, item ten point zero one, board member comments. Dr. Beers, do you have anything today?
Um, just that. I was glad to see that we got off to a, a great start. No, no special emails, and, and a lot of people need to be thanked for how smoothly things went today, from bus drivers to custodians to principals, teachers, everybody. Pretty, pretty phenomenal when you get eleven thousand students in school and out of school, and, and you don't lose any of them. That's, that's, that, you know, that's, that's really quite an incredible feat. I, I also encourage the community to respond. When the information gets put up on the, on our, on our website about redistricting, that it's really important to get the input and, and your thoughts about that as well.
Ms. Ombi?
Just wanted to say, on a, on a happy note, I think education is probably one of the few professions where you get to begin anew every September, and so it is very exciting and thrilling to start a new school year, I think, for our teachers, our staff, administrators, certainly our students. Mr. Kelly and I were at Hornsby and Blaton, he was Lafayette as well, but to see all the smiling faces, I think even my own two kids were excited, for the most part, to be back and to, to be in their school and to see their teachers and to see their friends. So it's always a great time to have school begin again. And I, so I wish a great new year to, school year to all of our staff, teachers, students, parents, administrators, and good luck to our parents on filling out that packet, that information packet. So tonight before the school board meeting, I filled out three packets. And so just food for thought later on, this came to me today after talking to, again, some constituents, as we, we think about automation and streamlining and budget cost, is there any way we could consider making that packet be online? The amount of manpower we could save from stuffing those packets and the postage and the trees and the paper? And I know there are school divisions that are totally online while providing access to folks who don't have access to, anyways, that packet. So good luck, parents, filling out your packets tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Mr. Kelly.
You should have a kid like mine. I enjoyed with, visiting with Horn, at, at Hornsby and Blaton with Mrs. Ombi and the kids getting off the bus. I also really enjoyed Lafayette and walking around with Dr. Nunali. She was engaging with the students and the, and the faculty, and I think that her energy is very palpable and contagious, and I think that she is going to, as an interim principal, is going to do a great job there. So I was very, very excited to see, to see that and, and talk with her at length. Dr. Beers mentioned this, how things, how smooth things went. I think Mr. Steins will tell you that there were many men behind the curtain moving levers and doing things to, to get it done.
And women.
And, men and women. And want to thank our bus drivers for, for all their efforts. I know they were out doing practice runs, and I'm sure there was patience, particularly at the elementary level, as, of parents taking kids, taking pictures of kids as they get on the bus and et cetera, et cetera. So I really, I really want to thank our bus drivers for all that they do because they, for, for a lot, a lot of our kids, they are the first part of the school and the last part of the school, and their school day, and they're, they make a big impact on our students, so I want to, just wanted to thank them for that, so. Anyway, that's good enough.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young?
Okay, well, my morning started out quite early this morning, going to Jamestown. It was lots of fun to see, yeah, I'm not, I couldn't believe I woke up that early, but it was lots of fun to be there and to see how excited the kids were. And it just seemed like everything was, you're exactly right, like all the levers had been pulled and things were going well. And then I went to Berkeley, where I was volunteered to get on a bus and pass out wristbands for the bus students. That was a lot of fun, and, but middle schoolers are so dynamic, they're, they're just amazing. And then I stood with people from the village and welcomed them into the school and, and saw Mr. Tikar, Tikarus.
Tikar.
And, and, and how excited he was and his staff and everything. That was so much fun. And then, and when, while I was there, there was a parent in the office that was checking her school, her child in the school, and I went over to Laurel Lane, she was there also, and she was excited to get her children back into school. I saw Mr. Thorpe at Laurel Lane, and we had the opportunity of watching all the new little bright beginning kids get off the bus, which was just amazing, the, the care and the tenderness that went with that. I enjoyed that, and I had an opportunity to walk into the gym and see the big new logo in the middle of the gym with the, the most darling penguin. So they didn't lose the penguin, but it was, I thought things went very well today. I just wanted to just reiterate about the redistricting process. I just wanted to just reiterate about the redistricting process. I think, think developing some criteria with the help of the community will be invaluable. And I just, we're not going to please everybody, I just want to make sure that that's understood. We, we're going to try though, we'll try to please as many people as possible. And then just because Hurricane Irma is coming up out of the Caribbean, I just want to just say that my thoughts are those impacted by Hurricane Harvey and in Texas and possibly those that will be impacted in Florida. And we may be seeing some of those kiddos up here with the destruction that has been happening in those areas, so my thoughts are with them.
Hello?
I'm sorry, I couldn't be present today because it's William and Mary's first full week at school. And so for me, we're only welcoming like a tiny, tiny fraction at the business school of the 11,000 you're dealing with, so kudos to everyone involved to, to get 11,000 people starting school in one day, all at once. It's just, it's an amazing feat of coordination, so. And I also are, I'm thinking today of all of the parents who not only are doing, filling out their packets, but having to deal with waking their kids up, making the lunches, worrying about all of their homework assignments and just all of the things that parents have to be now on it. They had like a little respite and now they're on it. And so my heart goes out to all the parents out there, in addition to all the teachers that are with our kids all day long.
Thank you. Mrs. Taylor?
Hey, it sounds like everyone's had a pretty great start to the school year, which is great, and I hate to rain on the parade a little bit, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention this. I've heard from a number of citizens regarding issues of transportation, particularly the bus driver shortage and the length of time it is taking children to be transported to and from school. So, Dr. Heron, is there any way we could have an update regarding this issue, any information that could be shared with the community?
Sure, Madam Chair, may we ask Mr. Baker to give a quick update on bus driver staffing now, would that be appropriate?
Sure, absolutely.
Definitely still have opportunities for bus drivers. I think we currently have, I think, about 10 FTE, full FTE positions open for the bus drivers, if anybody's interested. We do, you can call our transportation office at 757-565-0808 or you can apply online at wjccschools.org on the careers page and we definitely need the bus drivers. Thanks.
Thank you for that, that plug. Hopefully we're going to get some bus drivers now.
Thank you, anything else?
That's it.
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Kelly on your election as Vice Chair of the New Horizons Board, that's quite an honor.
Thank you.
So we've got two members of the board serving on regional bodies and that, you know, in leadership roles and that's really great. I saw the, very grateful to the Lowes team, it's really quite a facelift at Berkeley there and I know you saw that today too, Mrs. Young. So, and then I also was thinking about not only the first day today and how much work goes into that, but also all the work that it goes leading up to today. So I'm thinking about convocation and how wonderful that was. Congratulations on your first convocation as superintendent. It was really a wonderful event and I've heard a lot of good feedback from it and, and collaboration is the theme, so hopefully we can collaborate on criteria moving forward for redistricting and we'll get there. Also, the athletic directors had meet the coaches' nights at the three high schools and that's quite an undertaking, pulling all the fall athletic teams together and their parents. And then the new student orientation, whether that's in sixth grade or ninth grade, that's quite a feat and quite a way to welcome new students into a school culture. And then the open houses that followed and all the teachers and administrators that are there and the booster clubs and the PTAs, it's just, it's just a wonderful way to create community and then of course culminating in today's first day of school. So, and all the people that got all the facilities ready and, and transported. So thank you for spending some time with me this morning, the schools were great, the students were great, bright beginnings are the best with the little, holding the little, the little rope to their room, that's-
And the lunchbacks, just that are as big as them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's great, so. Anyway, any other comments? Okay. That brings us to upcoming events. On the 11th of September, there's a candidate briefing for candidates running for school board in room 203 here at James Blair at 2:30. And then on the 13th of September is the School Liaison Committee at 4:00 PM here in the, in the room 309 of the annex. No? No?
Didn't that get-
It's the county, D.
Huh? It's the county.
It's at, it's at the county.
Yeah, didn't we, did we get that resolved?
They've not confirmed yet that they have a room.
They have a room, okay, but it's not, because it's the county's turn to host.
Right.
Okay, so it's at the county.
So, so it's at, so can we make a correction for that?
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. And then the, I presume the first CAC meeting of the year on September 14th at 6:30 in the James City County Recreation Center. And the Policy Committee, which meets all of the year on September 20th at 4:00 PM in room 309 here in the annex, so. Those are upcoming events. And then our upcoming meetings where we take action on the 19th of September, that's where I was getting the 19th and the 17th confused, sorry about that. We have a closed session at 6:00 PM in city council chambers in the Stryker Center, followed by a public hearing on the criteria for redistricting at 6:30 in city council chambers and then followed by a regular, regularly scheduled meeting right after the public hearing in city council chambers. So that's all on the 19th of September. And then in October, we have a closed session at 6 o'clock on October 3rd in room 309 here in the annex, followed at 6:30 by work session, work session and action items in room 300, so. That brings us to 12.01, agenda items are set for the next regular meeting, so we've got all the things that we talked about and proposed agenda items plus the naming of the fourth middle school. We, redistricting is not on the agenda, other than to listen to the public hearing and will next be discussed in October. Is there anything else I'm forgetting that should be in any school spotlights, any, nothing? A couple of resolutions?
Policies on consent.
I'm sorry?
Policies on consent.
Policies are on consent, yes, thank you, Janet, yes. So that's it. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.